Chapter two fifty, Article four, Section four point one A two, four point one G, and four point one N four. Street address is one ten Fire Road twelve in Lunenburg. Assesses map one thirty-four, parcel thirty-one. Name and address of holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Lawrence Ulette. And the deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book eight zero zero five, page one six nine, and the deed was recorded nine twenty-three, two thousand and thirteen. The special permit questions, and they're out of order, are as follows. The question, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply, no, all dogs are kennelled, all waste commercially removed. Only one pre-screened prospective buyer is allowed per visit. Danger of fire or explosion is not an issue. Question number two, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities in the neighborhood? The reply, no, the kennel will not be open to the general public. Rather, individual pre-screened appointments shall be scheduled for potential buyers from Monday through Friday during the hours of ten a.m. and four p.m. No sign shall be erected on the premises. Only one automobile will be allowed for each potential buyer slash appointment. No other parking areas are required. Question number three, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use? The reply, yes, the proposed use is located on the dead end of a peninsula with minimal impact on the neighborhood. Most of the use will occur within the privacy fence panels minimizing the sight lines. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply, your exterior kennel shall be composed of six-foot chain-link fence panels with acoustic sound deadening wraps. Privacy screens will be employed along the further, with further sound dampening materials, all to prevent ob- observation of the lot lines. The proposed fencing panels and screening shall be in compliance with Chapter two fifty, six point six S O. Dust, vibration, heat, odor, heat or glare are not an issue. And that's signed on November fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. He has added a summary. The applicant, a sole proprietorship hereby applies for a special permit for the use, operation of a dog kennel as per the Lunenburg zoning, Chapter two fifty, Article four, Sections four point one A, G, and N four. The kennel is defined as the boarding, breeding, raising, grooming, or training of two or more dogs, cats, or other household pets of any age not allowed by the owner or occupant of the premises and/or for commercial gain. Structures, no new structures or buildings are required. Module removable, easily reconfigurable fence panels will be employed for the operation of the kennel. See bylaw, Chapter two fifty, Article two, Section two. Fences are specifically excluded from the definitions of building or structure. An existing garage on the premises should also be used, shall also be used as an indoor kennel during the evening hours. The night crates are five by five in dimension. The exterior kennel shall be composed of six-foot chain-link fence panels with acoustic sound deadening wraps. Privacy screens will be employed with further sound dampening material. The proposed fencing panels and screening will be in compliance with Chapter two fifty, six point six S O. Use, a maximum of six dogs are proposed for the kennel. The kennel will not be open to the general public. Rather, individual pre-screened appointments shall be scheduled for potential buyers from Monday through Friday during the hours of ten to four. No sign shall be erected on the pres- on the premises. Only one vehicle, automobile will be allowed for each potential buyer appointment. No other parking areas are required. The attached plot plan depicts this, depicts the situation of the proposed off-street parking, loading areas, and screening for compliance with Chapter two fifty S six point one. No series lighting shall shine on adjacent properties or toward the street. Daily house and activities, six a.m. food preparation for morning feedings, seven to eight a.m. morning feedings, ten to eleven thirty, clean kennels, dump, refill water buckets. Four to five thirty p.m. evening feeding, clean, refill water buckets for morning. Six thirty to seven thirty p.m. clean the kennels. Seven thirty p.m. bring each dog into its night crate. Time schedule is adjusted in the coldest of winter months. Miscellaneous, all solid waste is double-bagged and commercially removed. The kennel is inspected by the minimal control of AKC as well as the local dog officer annually. With few exceptions, someone is always available at the kennel if any issues occur. Bark callers are always on hand for new dogs. The applicant has been involved with rescue and breeding of German bred, German breed Rottweils since they started in nineteen eighty-one. Several puppies that have gone into special needs homes for children with autism and service dog training. This is our lifelong hobby that we love dearly. We continue to strive to keep the breed standard alive and available to people that truly love the breed. All our dogs have German pedigrees with exceptional temperaments and superior health quality. This is and will always be the backbone of what we do. Our hip and health guarantee is second to none within the dwindling group of professional rottweiler breeders still left in the New England area. When an application is re- received into the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals, it goes online to all the departments. So I'll read their comments, not the replies, just their comments. Patrick Sullivan, Fire Chief, no fire protection issues noted in the application. Fire Department has no applicable jurisdiction. Adam Bernie, Land Use Director, this project will require an application to the planning board for site plan approval per Section two fifty eight point four B five. The rules and regulations for filing of this application can be found on lunenburgma.gov website. Matthew Morrow, he's our conservation agent. Any additions or added structures require conservation review. And the last one, James Griffey, Board of Health Agent. I have reviewed the request as the agent of the Board of Health and have the following concerns. Given the location on the peninsula, I would be concerned with potential for noise conditions which might be in violation of the state's air pollution control regulations, particularly with water on three sides of the property. Excuse me. I'm not familiar with the sound deadening materials being described or who, how it would be installed. How often will animal waste get removed from the property and in what type of container will it be stored? We would rec- we would be concerned with the potential for odor or flies from the accumulation of dog waste. Though the feces are proposed to be collected, I assume the dogs will be urinating on the ground. I don't believe this concentrating of animal waste in a small area on a lot surrounded by the lake is advisable, and depending on the cleaning schedule and the ability to clean the surfaces may cause odor issues. I have received several emails from residents, and I will read, I will read them. This is from Lori Nash, received twelve twenty-nine. This is a notoriously aggressive breed. Larry came to my house one day last spring, early summer, on a pontoon pipe-type boat. We had not seen him in many, many, many years. We, we had both dogs, he had both dogs with him on the boat. Neither dog was restrained in any way, and Larry, and Larry was at the rear of the boat, nowhere close enough to address a possible issue. I approached the boat to greet him, and one of the dogs growled and lunged at me. Larry claimed that neither of the dogs had ever acted like that before. I'm not afraid of dogs. I've trained my own dogs in the past, and my reaction did not create any added tension. Imagine if I had reacted with fear. I've just read the complaints on the Hubbardston location countryside Rottweils kennel website. It states that a dog was returned for refund after exhibiting aggressive behavior. Aggressive dogs should not be bred, especially in a thickly res- settled residential community. Concern, no, noise nuisance, odor nuisance. Concern, the area must not be open to business zoning of any kind. Concern, ZBA needs to honor the conditions of the deed signed on nine twenty-three thirteen. No businesses of any kind. Concern, female dogs in constant state of heat. There have been multiple issues in the past in this very neighborhood with unleashed dogs doing their packing thing and terrorizing the neighborhood children. One chased Morgan Howlett right up a tree this summer. Having female breeding dogs persistently in heat will attract unleashed dogs for miles. Dogs will dig on defenses to get to her. This will become a much bigger nuisance than you think on the surface. Twelve thirty-one nineteen, Gary Spint. Dear Ms. Normandin and Zoning Board, my name is Gary Spint. My wife Maureen and I live at seven Ruth Street Lunenburg. We need to voice our opposition to the appeal of a decision by the Lunenburg Animal Control Officer at one ten Fire Road twelve Lunenburg, directly across the Lake Shirley from our house. The officer has denied a request for a profit kennel to breed and sell large dogs at this property, which we fully support. This for-profit business is directly on the lake, on the lake property, and the dogs presently on the premises and kennels can be heard barking many times all day long. There are currently two complaints to the Better Business Bureau, and an animal control officer there has cited violations at a location in Hubbardston where the owner already has a breeding business. If this business is granted, how many other businesses, businesses will request permission to disrupt the tranquility and delicate environment of Lake Shirley? My wife and I are unable to attend the meeting on January eighth, and I hope you consider this letter as you make your decision. Thank you for your attention, Maureen and Gary Spint. January first, I won't be able to attend this meeting on January eighth as I slipped on the ice and broke my ankle, so I'm homebound for a few months. Needless to say, I think this would be setting a precedent for others on the lake to start businesses. Never mind the discord in the current neighborhood and additional traffic. We love dogs, and I do have a dog, but there are two dogs that live across our cove. The dogs appear to have access to the outdoors all day long, and the barking is incessant when they come out. We can go on to thirty to forty-five minutes at a time, very annoying. I can only imagine how the barking would be coming from a kennel. The kennel's location being lakeside will also be unsightly. We came very close to buying a house on Piment- Pimenta Street. Thank you. It would be a lovely area. I'd be ashamed to upset the natural balance of the area. Thank you for listening. This should not be approved. Roxy and Tessier, twenty-one May Street. January fourth, one, um, one more problem with kennels on the lake, if someone can bring this forward, is that in the summer, when everyone has their windows open at night, you can hear even a conversation people are having, whether on the boat or on the lake or outside in the surrounding areas. Imagine if there's barking constantly. Many people would not be, be pleased. Judy Viviano, thirteen Ruth Street. Hello, this is from Roland and Wander Ledger, thirty-one Pimenta Street. We oppose, oppose the kennel on the lake. We do not want this in our neighborhood or our beautiful and quiet lake. Dot Peters was my aunt, and she would not have wanted this at all. Please honor her wishes, please. Thank you, and let's keep fighting for this not to go through. Hello, my name is David Ossoff. I am a homeowner at forty-six Fire Road twelve. I'm strongly opposed to the installation of the kennel at one ten Fire Road twelve. My first concern with this kennel is the noise. There have already been several complaints from residents of Flynn Road. This, the addition of more rottweilers to this location will absolutely amplify the ongoing noise. Frankly, this issue affects everyone in our cove as sound carries over the water. Flynn Road, Fire Road twelve, Pimenta Road, Ruth Street, and Round Road will all be affected. One of the things that drew me to Fire Road twelve was the serenity of the lake in the early morning hours. That will be forever stolen from us should this kennel be approved. This will reduce our quality of life here on the lake. The reduction in quality of life with the presence of a rottweiler kennel may easily dissuade others from moving to our area, and it will most certainly negatively impact my property values. There was also an incident during the summer where two rottweilers escaped from the pen and were running up and down our street with many neighbors trying to catch them. This is a potentially dangerous situation and one which I would not want to see repeated and amplified with the addition of more rottweilers. This is a residential area. A dog kennel is a business, one that is potentially dangerous to neighbors as well as being a nuisance that, nuisance that has no place on our road. Thank you, David Ossoff, forty-six Fire Road twelve. Hi Lisa, I would be at the zoning meeting this evening if not ill. I am confused as to how one neighbor can be allowed to change the demographics of the neighborhood. It is not right that a business should go on a private road. The quiet enjoyment will be taken away from so many, especially since noise is amplified over lakes. Where does all the waste go? The lake. I object to a kennel. Thank you, Terry Moore, eight twenty Reservoir Road. Good morning, Mrs. Normandin. This is received today. I am writing this morning to express my opposition to the dog kennel appeal for Lawrence Ulette one ten Fire Road twelve Lunenburg, Mass. on the agenda for the Zoning Board of Appeals tonight. My concerns for this request are the number of dogs, the barking, the type of dog, and that it will set a precedent for other lake residents to be able to open kennels. As it is walk, as it is walking anywhere around the lake, if you are not a dog person, and maybe even if you are, it's frightening. I've had dogs run out at me on Reservoir Road, both walking and biking, and into the lake in the winter while snowshoeing across country skiing. Noise travels a great distance across the lake depending on wind direction and season. In the good weather, I already could not sleep with windows open due to the neighborhood, neighborhood dog barking. It's my understanding that the animal control officer in Lunenburg has denied this license request. As the appointed expert for the town, I would trust the ACO as good reason to deny the request and support their expert decision. I am hoping this letter can be submitted for the ZBA for tonight's meeting, as I'm not sure I can attend. Thank you, Tammy Lovewell, five seventy-nine Reservoir Road. This was also received today. Hello, Lisa. It was suggested we email you if we could not attend tonight's meeting for the above referenced topic conversation. We are not able to attend tonight's meeting as there is a conflict with high school ice hockey game tonight. In my opinion, this kennel business should not be allowed nor licensed at that location. I am against this for several reasons. First and most importantly, it makes the town, it appears the town already denied their request. Second, if they should breed dogs, it would be disruptive twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days to all lake residents, as noise carries further on the lake than other places. And third, the type of dogs that may be used for breeding, rottweilers. They are all loud, they are large, loud, and potentially aggressive animals that are not suited for the area. Please do not allow this kennel business to be licensed or operational. Thank you for your time. Richard Danielle Defazio, one thirty-four P Road. And finally, oh, not finally, this was also received this afternoon. Hi Lisa and Zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing with you, to you in regards to the hearing. We live at three eighty Sunset Lane. We are against allowing the, this business to operate on Lake Shirley. We believe it will have a negative impact packed on the lake. Dogs will be barking at boats passing by. There is potential for odors and contamination of the lake due to dog feces leaching into the lake. It also opens the door to other businesses to get approved for operating on the shores of Lake Shirley. Sincerely, Alan and Christine Culberg. And tonight in hand, I received a message from Tamra Prue of eighty Fire Road twelve, and the concerns are as follows. The two rottweiler adult dogs currently living at Larry Ulette's one ten Fire Road twelve address have been seen on several occasions running loose in a yard since his brief occupation at that address. Also, these dogs did not respond promptly when called to come by Larry. He, Larry, has indicated to my husband that, and I, that he has made a significant profit on the sale of puppies, and that's a reason for his breeding the rottweilers. Stated that he makes twenty thousand dollars per dog. This is from Elaine Barrowby, eighty Fire Road. My concerns are as follows. The safety of my family and friends, increased noise level and the smell, especially in the summer. Signed Elaine Barrowby. And finally, Chris Hildreth, eighty Fire Road twelve. My concerns are as follows. Smell, noise level, and resident and company's safety. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant up.
Evening.
Hi, guys.
Hi, um, okay. If there's anything else that you would like to add, any more information, anything that you would like to say, or you feel your petition is, is covered to everything you'd like?
Okay, I think first and foremost, um...
You have to give your name and address.
I'm sorry, Larry, we're at one ten Fire Road twelve.
Thank you.
Um, I've heard the word business used over and over and over again. We're not applying for a professional dog kennel. We're applying for a personal dog kennel. It's different than a breed, uh, breeding kennel, different than a boarding kennel, different than a veterinarian kennel, and it's all described in the Lunenburg Police Department. They have definitions of all the kennels. They've taken it directly from the mass general laws of what their definitions of dog kennels are. So they, it's word for word verbatim. The personal kennel allows people to breed dogs for the purpose of making them better for the breed and trying to keep the breed's standards. We're not a backyard breeder. We're not a professional kennel. We've been doing this since nineteen eighty-one. We started as a Rotti Rescue. This isn't a business. It's, I tried to bring it to my CPA. He looked at three years' worth of stuff. He said, you have a hobby. He says, the federal government does not want to be giving you federal credits every year for tax credits if you're losing money constantly. The fact that somebody said we sell puppies for twenty thousand dollars apiece, is that what it read? Seems a little abstract. Right now, we don't have a kennel. So whatever the people are reacting to, they're reacting to my two personal dogs that are there, and I have to leave to go to work. They're not in a kennel environment. We have kennel environments in other locations, and we've dealt with this before with every surrounding people around, and we have other kennel permits. We've run into the same problems, people's fears of the unknown. Somebody put out a flyer earlier, a couple weeks ago, that was very inaccurate. I responded to it and typed with a letter I put around to the mailboxes to try and quellch their fears, help them understand better what's going on, to negate some of the things that were said improperly in that letter. I think that sent a lot of fear into a lot of people, and I'm hoping that whoever penned that did it mistakenly and did not do it on purpose to put everybody in fear. That's like screaming fire in a theater. You know, you go to jail for that. I think there's a lot of inaccuracies in that, and I'm assuming most of the people that reacted, sent emails and letters and so forth, saw that letter, and they took that as being the truth. It's very far from it. Specific things, I sent a message to James regarding his concerns about the urine, the feces, and so forth. That didn't get read. I can, if you question, I can...
I didn't see anything.
Oh, it didn't show up in the response? Okay. As far as the feces, it's double-bagged in three-mil contractor bags inside a fifteen-gallon sealed bucket, which is inside the indoor kennel. It's never outside. Feces are cleaned up and brought inside. In terms of the urine, the kennels are set up on top of six or eight inches of half-inch crushed round stone that allows to be able to pick the feces up off of it so it doesn't go into the ground. The urine is cleaned nightly with white vinegar. It neutralizes any of the urine smell, any contamination. It acts like a disinfectant. That's the most natural way to do it. We do that nightly. Every week or two weeks, weekly in the summertime, we clean the kennels with white vinegar and Simple Green. That's the only product allowed by the coast, the Coast Guard says you can clean your bills with it on the water. It's biodegradable, it's a disinfectant, and it neutralizes any sort of contamination. That comes through the stone, goes out into the gravel. We live on a gravel bank. It goes down through the ground the same way as our septic system does. There are no solids, it's just water. And typically, we go through a lot of water cleaning. In our, when in one of our situations, we have six kennels that we're able to move four dogs around, and so we're constantly cleaning them. We go through eight hundred to a thousand gallons of water a day, just in cleaning, in feeding, filling buckets and so forth. I don't know what else to address broadly without questions.
Okay, well, this, this board will have some questions, and there'll, there'll be a lot more that comes up, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
So you said, you'd said you have two pets.
I have two of my own pets, right. One of them is no longer part of the breeding program. He's a house pet.
And you're asking for a kennel for six? Are you asking for the six breeding dogs or whatever you want to call them?
Correct. And I asked, and I asked for two pets to stay in the house.
And you do plan on breeding those, so we do expect litters?
No, no, no. When our older dogs don't breed anymore for whatever reason, we're able to place some of them, if they run into certain situations, in the right homes. We don't just dump our dogs. Most of them live with us until they die. So we usually...
These six dogs, you're telling them you're just gonna live with you, almost like pets, but they're gonna be in a kennel?
Right, they're in crates. They're in indoor/outdoor kennels that go through the garage.
I understand that. I'm trying to get your purpose of having the six dogs.
The six dogs, we ask for a minimum...
And you say, you say you have other kennels too, right? Correct?
We do. We have one in Hubbardston and one in Uckersville.
Then what's the need of having another one at your, in a residential neighborhood?
I'm selling my property in Hubbardston, and I'm moving the bare minimum down to the lake. That's my hope. We were told to ask for more than what we needed in hopes that the board, you know, would allow half of that. I thought that was silly. I don't want to scare people and say, okay, we need twelve dogs. We don't. We're down to the bare minimum. Two males, four females. They get rotated around to the other kennels depending on where they're being bred, where they're gonna be whelped. That is the, the purpose of a personal kennel. It's not a professional breeding kennel that is, I can give you the definition if you want.
No, actually, I see that, that some of the representatives of the town are here, and since you're referencing the police, I'm gonna, and I see that Mr. Marino is here, so I'm sure that he would address that.
Yeah.
And the dog officer, Kathy, I also see is here, so she can address some of that as well.
And to your question earlier, many of the things said that there, we have been denied by the dog officer. The Lunenburg's procedure, I was told, for asking for a personal kennel is to first go to the dog officer, which is the first thing we did. She told me directly, go to the building inspector, show him what you want to do. Give him an idea of what's happening. We did that. Then it went to Lisa, and then that's how everything started. So we have not been denied...
Correct, I understand that.
...kennel by anybody, and she will tell you the same thing.
Right, we will clear that up.
I asked her ahead of time, what do we do to do it right? I didn't come in and start building things and so forth. I could've, but I didn't.
Okay. Um, I looked at the, the little print that you had in there. I actually went down. I didn't go on your property, but I went to the end of the road, looked at your property. It appears that, from what I saw there, you, you expect to put four kennels off to the side of the garage...
Between the garage and the house, yeah.
And then two in the front where one of the bays are.
And there's a, there's an exercise yard.
Not where the pontoon boat is, though.
No, 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 no.
Not on the other.
Wrong side.
Wrong side.
Facing the house.
Side facing the house.
Garage and the house is separated by sixty feet, and the kennels will go in between them.
Okay, okay.
We thought that was the best place to minimize any sound.
All right.
And in terms of sound attenuation, there are like six companies that specifically build sound deadening, absorbing, soundproofing panels for, specifically for kennels. And they come out and they send out a sales guy, they look at your situation, because everybody's is different. You know, where is the sound going to? Is it, you know, their whole hope is to stop the sound from going out and make any what's left go straight up. That's, that's their purpose. They're in very well-to-do kennels that work very, very well that are in residential areas. So that's why we submitted to them, to put up two sets of sound deadening. One at the kennels that's against the garage, and a second set that's in a perimeter fence that's outside. So if the dogs were to get out of the kennel, they still can't get out of the fence. The reason my dogs, I'm not gonna lie, one of my dogs got away, not all of them, not both of them, not multiple times. One time, my male dog jumped out, he jumped up over the wall, three-foot wall, and just walked around the neighborhood. He walked up to Mrs. Barrowby's house, was sitting on the stairs with her. And then what, what, um, who was it that brought him home?
I...
Again...
Oh, thank you.
Just, just talk to the boy.
Scott did. Um, Scott brought him home, walked him home. I mean...
Twice, I don't remember.
You hear?
I brought your dog home twice.
Okay, twice, okay.
Okay, all right.
Not doing the first one again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, okay, it's also, this is a fairly, I'm gonna say it's a fairly small lot that you have.
Yep.
Maybe three quarters of an acre of that.
Yep.
Okay. And there's a lot of homes coming into there on a very, you know, on that one fire road.
Ten roads, yeah, ten homes.
Very tight-knit neighborhood from what I saw. Okay, and with that, I'm just actually gonna open it up to the board for any questions they may have.
I read somewhere that you said there's like a sound deadening muzzle and something that you had created.
Oh, bark callers.
Is that what they...
Bark callers?
Yes.
They use in kennels with new dogs that come in that are not part of the kennel environment. They usually, they have a period of time that they try and, the pack tries to get them in line. And if they're not, then we put bark collars on them. If they bark, it gives them a small shock underneath. You can adjust it depending on the size of the dog, whether it be a male or a female. And it just, after a couple of barks, they just don't do it. Our dogs don't bark because they're hungry. Our dogs don't bark because they're bored. Our dogs don't bark because they've got nothing else to do. They alert. When we first put my two dogs down on, on a patio, early mornings fishermen would come by in kayaks, five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, and if they were out there, they can smell them coming before they ever see them. My dogs can't see what's out in the lake because there's a, there's a gazebo right in front of them. They have no visual line of anything on the lake, but they can smell it before you come. Sean Zaret, one of the sergeants from the police department, that responded to a call. One of his younger officers was already there. He showed up on site, he knew enough to stop at the property line and just stayed there. Stayed there for twenty-five minutes. No barking. Somebody called and said the dogs were barking constantly, constantly, wouldn't stop. He got out of his car, he walked all the way up to within nine feet of the dogs, and then both of them turned right to him, looked at him and barked. It stopped after about a minute and a half. I showed up because I have a ring system on my house. I could actually see Officer Zaret walking past it, it alerted me. I hit the audio button, I could hear him walking by. There were no barks until he got to the corner, he could literally see from me to Lisa, the dogs. And then I invited both of them down to the patio, opened the gate, closed the gate, went to the kennels, opened both kennels up. Officer Zaret was okay because he's had rottweilers before. He knew, he could read the body language. His younger officer was a little concerned. Both of them came up to both of them. The worst thing they did was cover them in hair because the dogs were leaning up against them constantly, between their legs, leaning up against them. Officer Zaret looked in, and he actually filed a report. Kennels were clean, they were large enough for the dogs, there was plenty of food supply, there was clean water supply, the kennels were clean. He said, this is, this is perfect. This is what you should be doing. This is normal for us. This isn't a business, this isn't something we do for money. We both work jobs. Believe me, this does not make money. If it did, I'd be driving a Mercedes. I'm driving a company truck because I don't even have my own truck. So this is not a business, and it's certainly not a profitable one. We're upside down this year fifteen thousand dollars to this point. People say, oh my god, you sell puppies for two thousand dollars, you must be rich. But they don't see it's sixty-four hundred dollars a month for kibble. Another three thousand dollars for meat and rice. Go to a vet for, well, vet check for a litter of puppies? Eight hundred, nine hundred dollars every time. People don't understand this. And it's up and down. We haven't had litters for May of last year. Was one of our last litters that left, and now we have some litters that all came together. They all got bred at the same time, so now we have some puppies available. Somebody had the audacity that are right in there that we would somehow take the puppies from the mothers to move the kennel down here. We're not gonna move down here till I sell my house, which I'm hoping to do by early fall. This isn't something that's happening tonight. Did I answer, I'm sorry, did I answer your question? I easily get off track.
Yes, you did, but I also had another one. I thought I saw something in there that this would be, someone would be on the premises.
Yes.
All the time. You said both of you work.
I work nights.
Right, I work days, she works nights. So I'm, I'm out of the house at quarter of six every morning at the latest. And I'm sure there's several people here that have seen it and can tell you that. I have to go to work, that's my job. I'm out of work by two o'clock, and I come home, take care of the dogs. On my lunch break, I only live four miles away. I come back, clean the kennels, wash the kennels, give them more food, take their dog dishes. That's my lunch break.
Thank you.
We, we care about these dogs. These isn't, these aren't objects, this isn't a business. They've been part of our lives for forty years, our children's lives, our grandchildren's lives. We have a two-year-old that runs around with four adult dogs. We have no worries. Mrs. Nash, I, I can't explain why she was, she was worried about that. I mean, that, what she said, I'm telling you, it wasn't what happened, but everybody interprets things their own way, so.
Any other questions?
I had one quick question, just to kind of go back to something you said. When you said moving dogs between kennels, is that your kennels or are those like other people that kind of do the same thing that?
They're our kennels.
Okay.
We co-own some of these dogs with a good friend of mine in Connecticut.
Okay.
In order for us to have enough dogs and that we show as well. Some dogs go to Connecticut, some come up. Depends on breeding, she whelps some litters there.
Who's being bred, when, where they're gonna be bred and whelped?
My mother also has a kennel permit, while it's under my name in Hubbardston.
Okay.
For six dogs.
Gotcha, okay.
Some of our retired dogs, if we can't home them. My mom loves to take care of them.
At one time, we had a kennel permit at that, at that premises at Comet Lake for fourteen dogs. And that was for quite a few years.
Hundred by a hundred square.
In a hundred by a hundred square foot area.
Whoever was talking about a small lot. And they do the same thing in Hubbardston, you have to go first back there.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, I'm sorry, excuse my ignorance, but. So it's not a business, it's a personal dog kennel. What's the, what's the purpose of the dogs? You just, you just, do you have the dogs?
I love the dogs. I've had them in my life for a very long time.
So is it any different than having somebody who has six dogs, like, or seven dogs? Well, I mean.
You're only allowed four dogs in town, above four dogs.
Only allowed four dogs in town, so, but.
Above that, you have to apply for some type of kennel license.
You have to apply for a kennel because it's more than four dogs?
Right, right.
Is that the only reason you have to apply for a kennel?
No, we need a kennel license so that I can, if I want to breed a dog, bring one of our other dogs there and swap out.
Your.
To move the dogs around, basically.
Your, your town ordinance say that.
Otherwise, I'd be registering dogs left and right every few months or if I switched out a dog.
So, so if you had fewer than four dogs, you wouldn't be here before the, the board, is that correct?
Fewer than four dogs, it doesn't work for us because the bare minimum's six. I have to have two males and four females. That, that really is. I didn't ask for ten or twelve in hopes that you'd give me eight.
And are you, are you breeding the dogs?
Yes, we breed them, yes.
That's.
I'm trying to understand.
Breed them, show them, we have two champion, actually, three champion dogs. And I'm working on a title on a fourth dog right now. So it's a hobby, it's something I love, something I've done for most of my life.
So is the, is the breeding for the purpose of sale?
Of bettering the breed.
So that, I'm trying to.
To take care of the dogs, obviously.
Well, no, I'm trying, we're trying to understand that here.
Yes.
You keep mentioning breeding.
We sell puppies, yes.
You do, okay.
Which we are allowed to do.
I understand that, yeah.
As a pet.
Can I, Lisa, can I submit this?
So, so wouldn't selling puppies be a business?
Nope.
No.
It's not?
No, it's described.
Says it right here.
I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from.
Because we're not selling them in wholesale.
All that, all the.
Okay.
So you're allowed to sell to personal, like, we sell to people that have PTSD dogs.
You?
Sell, I actually have someone from this town, Moon, coming to visit Saturday for a special needs. Their son is autistic and they want a rottweiler because they had one growing up. So, you know, for the better of the breed, that's why I breed them.
Okay, did we get your name?
Cindy Phillips, sorry. That's why.
An address, same.
Right now, I'm in Hubbardston at the one twenty-four Barry Road residence for the dogs.
Okay.
Until the house is.
Sold.
After sale or sold, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think I understand, Mr. Chairman, I might have some more questions, but that answers my questions for now. Thank you.
The, the Lunenburg Police Department is definitely.
I agree, I always confuse myself. You're taking the dogs, you're having them there, you take, bring another dog up, you take one of those dogs out to another location for breeding.
Right, exactly.
You sell puppies.
Right, right.
Okay.
Sometimes to get ready for show, for training, for, you know, road services.
Okay.
I can't tell you what this is.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, so I, understanding that, you're looking for two personal dogs and then.
Two retired dogs that stay with us.
So let me just, it's two personal dogs, and on top of that, six, six additional dogs for this purpose of breeding.
Correct.
For breeding, show, yeah.
Okay. And, and on top of that, you could have puppies there as well?
Yes, you're, you're allowed to have as many puppies as you want.
I'm just trying to understand that, you know.
Yes, it will be some litters of puppies.
And, and what, and what is the usual size of a litter?
It could be four, it could be ten or twelve.
Could be one, we have a litter of one right now.
Yep.
So hypothetically, if you had a litter of puppies, how long would they stay with you?
They have, they have to stay eight weeks. At seven weeks, they go for a well-vet check, the veterinarian, they check them for the eyes, heart, hips, heart murmurs.
We almost never have a puppy past eight weeks because we have a waiting list.
Typically, all our puppies are in a deposit long before they're born. We have people that come from Syracuse, from Long Island. We have customers that come from the Canadian border of Vermont. We actually had a customer, yeah, Nantucket. We actually had a customer come from Fredericksburg, New Brunswick. I had to Google it. It's eleven and a half hours away. He actually flew in to find us because he could not find a decent breeder for two years. We do a good job of what we do. We're the only breeder that I know of, there's eleven major breeders still in New England. Out of the eleven, we're the only one that offers a hip and health guarantee. And we can do that because we specifically bring in our dogs from Germany or Poland. All our dogs are imported, and we import them, and we do a very good job at checking their pedigrees. You can have some of the best dogs in the world, but if you breed too much of a certain line and a pedigree that can be awesome, you can create your own problem. Doing this for thirty-some odd years, we found out it's a lot easier to make a mistake than it is to get it right. You have to do your homework. This is not, I'm gonna breed your dog to my dog, we're gonna have puppies, and you're gonna take the money. That's not how it works. We're doing this for one reason, to make the breed better, keep it from getting any worse than it is with, with people breeding rotties now that are three and a half feet tall, they look like giant Darwin pinches, horrible health, terrible breeding. We've had so many customers come to us that have bought these dogs and have lost them at six months, eight months, eighteen months. I can tell you story after story. Not from us. And they came to us because their dogs died because of poor breeding, because of, you know, just nobody taking the time to do what you're supposed to do. Those are backyard breeders. That definition backyard breeder and hobby breeder have been set apart, and I have that in definitions, and it tells you what the difference is. You know, we are responsible to the ADRK, forget AKC. AKC is the Americanized version of the rottweiler quote-unquote standard. ADRK is leaps and bounds ahead of them. They will not let an adult dog out of Poland when we import them. They will not let them out unless they have an extensive health check. We're talking weeks' worth of stuff. They send them through for DNA, they send them through for heart stuff, they send them through for their, their hips, elbows, eyes, heart murmurs. We've had customers that have come to us. And temperament. That, that's the biggest thing. Everybody's concerned about temperament. I'm hoping anybody that uses the word dangerous breed here are these people and not any of you. The reason I say that is because in October two thousand twelve, Governor Patrick passed a law not allowing discrimination of any of the bully breeds. Meat breed specific legislation banned in Massachusetts. It will not allow a town, an entity, or anyone, insurance company, to deny you or discriminate by breed. They have, look at a rottweiler the same way as you look at a golden lap. They don't understand that, I'm assuming you guys do.
So, you know, one other question I just have for you, and then, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you. You know, one of the things that the board has to take a look at when we, when we issue a special permit, you know, is would the proposed action produce noise? So I'd like you to address that because I don't think you addressed it clearly enough in here. And then the other thing would have, you know, a material adverse effect on the value of the land and the neighbors in the neighborhood. And so could you just talk to that a little bit?
Okay, let's start with the noise. Again, like I said, there are three or four very good professional companies that make sound deadening, sound absorbing, sound attenuation for, specifically for dog kennels. It, it's different depending whether in the city, in the country, on a lake, on a peninsula. They come down and that's their job, that's what they do. We're proposing two levels of it. One of them in the kennel enclosure, on the kennel panels themselves. The hanging ones work very well. They absorb any sound that goes from the garage inside the kennel to the kennel wall. It stops it there, and any sound literally goes straight up. After that, four feet outside of that is the perimeter fence that will have a second layer of sound deadening. It works. I don't know how else to tell you, it works. This isn't something we're trying, this isn't something new, this is what professional breeding kennels do. This is somebody that's got twenty kennels, thirty kennels in Hartford, Connecticut. We've been to them. This isn't, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. This is what the people that do this for a living do, and we follow their lead. Why try and reinvent it? It works for them, it works for us. The second half was.
What is the material adverse effect on the value of the land?
I, I don't, I can't control the value of the land, I can't. I, I can't, we had this issue in Hubbardston, and it got brought to the city council, and they told them, it's not gonna affect your ability to sell your house one way or the other. They're buying what's there.
And how long have you owned the property?
Owned it since, I, it was transferred to me in nineteen ninety-four. I was born there, I grew up there, Dottie Peters is my mother.
Okay.
A lot of people here might not know that. I've lived there most of my life. Nineteen ninety-four, I started paying the taxes because my mom couldn't afford to pay it anymore.
Okay.
She said that's the closest she'll ever get to heaven and didn't want to go anywhere else, so. Since nineteen ninety-four, I've been paying seven, eight thousand dollars a year in taxes so she could live there. You know, she deeded it over me because she knew I'd want to retire there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Why did she put in the deed that it would not be a business and you're still, even though you say it's not a business, it's perceived as a business?
That was in the nineteen fifty-six, the transfer of my uncle, zooming it up. That was the same, so that they wouldn't have something like another Shady Point. They wouldn't have another, what was the other one, Lake Shirley, down by the dam? Lake Shirley campground? It wouldn't be a business. Massachusetts laws have a thirty-year, what's it called? There's a thirty-year statute of limitations, it ran out in nineteen eighty-six. Even if we wanted to build a business, that would have run out then. We don't want to build a business, we will never have a business.
Okay, any other questions?
So you mentioned that you've been doing this since nineteen eighty-one?
Yeah, I'm starting at nineteen eighty.
I understand. And you, you mentioned that the area in Hubbardston was a hundred by hundred.
The first, the first one, yeah.
So can you talk to us about what you have done there to help? I'm assuming that that's the same type of situation.
Yep.
So talk to us about what you have done.
Right across from Comet Pond.
All right.
Actually, Lakefront property.
But tell us what you have done there as far as, and, and what the reactions thereof.
We wanted to put up chain link fence there. They wanted something that would deaden the sound, so we had to put up wooden fences, almost double the cost. We.
Not even a cost of stage maintenance of a wooden fence.
And, yeah, and it deadens the sound because it's a solid wall rather than what, sound being able to travel through it towards the lake. That was the first thing. Second thing is reposition the kennels so that they were backed up to the wall that any sound would go out in the woods and not towards the lake. That answer your question?
The neighbors opposed to it, they were opposed, and the kennel license got reduced to six because the kennel, the neighbors were concerned about the breed.
Okay.
Not about the size, not about the.
It basically, it was two neighbors, not even all the neighbors, it was two neighbors that didn't like the breed, were afraid, one of them doesn't like animals, period.
And I, and I understand that, and I'm, I am looking at this as, and I do know, I do know of the Massachusetts law that you cited. So I do look at this as saying that you're having, you're having dogs. Okay, I'm not looking at the breed, I'm looking at you having dogs. However, I'm also looking at it as that, as you say, it's gonna be eight plus. It's gonna be six, two of your own, six for breeding, and then plus if there's any, for at least eight weeks if there's any additional. for at least eight weeks if there's any additional. But there's still going to be eight dogs. At all times, there's going to be eight dogs on that property.
Or less. Or less. It could be down to three or four depending on where they go.
Yeah.
Again, this isn't a maximum all the time. We need that as a minimum number to be able to move them around, to be able to properly breed them in time. You know, when a female comes in heat, we've only got six days from the time she comes into heat to get her bred. If we don't, we miss it for another six or eight months.
Well, seventy-two, yeah. That was another, someone brought up dogs in heat all the time. Dogs come in heat luckily, if they do, twice a year. Some every eight months.
And we have never, in my property in Hubbardston, we've never had stray dogs. And we don't have fences up there to stop anything. We were in the woods and the dogs are off-leash all the time. They don't come to our yard because the females are in heat. It's just a non-issue. I don't know why that even got brought up.
Yeah.
The Lunenburg Police Department rules, if you read them, say that if you have a female in heat, you have to either, one, bring them to a boarding kennel or keep them indoors all day.
And then the other question was regarding on the plans. It was a little difficult to understand. However, what is, what measures are you putting to prevent the ability for the dogs, as you mentioned, the dogs to see, see if anything's approaching as well as the, any of the neighbors to be able to see the dogs?
That is, I wish I had brought pictures. I really would. It would have made it a lot easier. The sound-deadening material is a dark green material. It's probably an inch thick that hangs. Our indoor kennels are five by tens. They're six foot tall. Outside of that is a secondary system of the chain link fence, again, six feet tall. Our dogs can't see out and people cannot see the dogs. They will not be able to tell that there's a dog in there unless it barks.
So I'm confused because, so you're showing six kennels outside of the garage?
Correct. Those are the outdoor daytime kennels.
So those are out, daytime only?
Correct. And then there's an opening through the, through the wall. They call indoor/outdoor kennels. They're there in every kennel that we know of unless you want to walk around. You just open the door. They come to the inside crates at night. Close the door. They sleep there inside the garage at night.
So your proposal is what, how many, how, is there a certain time that the dogs would be permitted?
We had it, we had it in there typically. In the wintertime, we bring them out later because it's colder. So we try and bring them out eight, maybe nine o'clock.
I'm more concerned with the summer, so...
Okay. The earliest in the summer is typically quarter of eight, eight o'clock?
No, I'm seven o'clock.
Seven?
Before it gets hot, but...
Okay. And in, in the evening, probably seven-thirty or so.
Yeah. I don't like a mob when the mosquitoes are bad, so, I mean, that's...
Okay.
We'd rather have them inside. I have an air conditioner for them inside. My two dogs now, somebody mentioned that they were afraid that dogs were outside because it was cold out. Rottweilers do very well. They have two coats. They do very, very well in the winter. They're fine at five or ten below zero. They have their dog houses. They have their straw inside the dog houses. They don't do well in the summertime. I have a forty-two-inch fan that runs all day long while they're there and I'm at work because they can't cool off. All they can do is drink water and pant. So, I mean, we care more about the dogs than we do about our own children sometimes, so...
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else here like that?
Other than if somebody brings up something we hadn't thought of, to be able to answer it, if there's a question that we can answer...
Can I address one of the complaints? The complaint to the benefit of the business owner?
Oh, yes.
About aggressive dogs?
You can.
Okay. That particular person that we settled with, what happened, they'd never had a rottweiler before. They were pretty convincing that they were responsible to have a rottweiler puppy. They bought a puppy, did not bring their children out to visit us, which now I've revised that I have to meet the kids before I'll sell a puppy anymore.
The kids were young and active like normal children. So they had the puppy for about a month. She called me in a panic because the vet scared the puppy and the puppy growled at the vet. And the vet said, "Oh, you need to get this puppy into behavioralist right away" because the vet didn't like the puppy. Therefore, she called me. I assessed the dog. It came out. Puppy was not aggressive. She brought the kids. The kids were racing around the house and the puppy was running around chasing, biting. If anyone's had a puppy with children, you know what puppies do. They chase children. They bite at their pant legs. That's what was going on.
So there was no attempt by her to socialize correctly? Socialize the children to the puppy or the puppy to the children?
So I took the dog back. In my contract, there is a no-money-back. She was aware of that before buying the dog. She disputed it because she wanted her money back. She came to my house three times before she left her deposit. Three times before putting a deposit on a puppy. So if the dogs were aggressive, she wouldn't have put a deposit.
She met every one of them. We do it differently. Most kennels you go to, I don't know if Dog Office can speak to it, other kennels that you go to, and we do, we check out other kennels. You go to them, you get to stand outside the kennels like you guys are there. And you stand outside the fence and the dogs jump up and down and bark and bark at the walls because they're excited. Something's there. Now, you're supposed to make as a buyer an intelligent decision of who the parents of your dogs are. We do it differently. We bring you to our home. We allow two, two-and-a-half hours between appointments with everybody so they have time. We bring the dogs in one other time so they can play with them, play catch, rub their belly, sit on a couch with them, watch TV. And we all do this. We bring all the dogs. Not just the mom and dad for that particular litter that we're going to have. We want them to see everybody. We've had people that wanted a puppy right away and fell in love with a female that we weren't going to breed for eight months. And they says, "No, we'll wait. We love her. We love him." We do our homework. We're not selling puppies for money. Here's a buck a puppy by the door.
To go back to the mic, just to make sure this is televised.
So...
All right.
If there are any other questions that come up, I'd love to be able to answer them as best as possible. I'm sure there are going to be other people have concerns. I hope that we got most of them. I sent a, at least let out into the mailboxes to try and give them some better information and to, you know, quell their fears. We've run into this before. The people are afraid of the unknown. They're not sure what it's going to be. And their mind automatically goes to the worst-case scenario. And almost every time, people are surprised that it didn't turn out to be what they thought it was going to turn into.
Okay.
Is it possible that you can give us a contingent permit rather than a license? An annual permit that will allow us to go for a year and see how things happen? See for people to be able to understand what's going on? A license is typically given permanently. And then it's...
It's a permanent, it's a special permit.
It's a special permit. But is there a possibility of an annual or two-year permit that will allow us to operate and show the people that their fears are unfounded? Just a thought.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think what I would like to do now, I know the chief is here, the dog officer, animal control officer is here. So if they would like to come up, one at a time, together, what you would like to do? I will tell you, we have another hearing and a continuance that is at eight. On that hearing, I'm going to open it up. I'm going to ask them to kindly wait for this hearing to continue. And then we will go back to that hearing, that continuance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here on behalf of the animal control officer. I'm here to give you a history lesson. In the past, kennel license was, kennel licenses were just given out more or less on an arbitrary basis. As of the last three years, the animal control officer falls under my purview. Since that time, we've worked to try to, since that time, we've worked to try to improve that process. The reason I'm here tonight is because we, as was probably already said, we haven't made a decision on whether or not we're going to issue this permit or not because what we would like to do, or what we have been doing and what we'd like to do going forward and what we've done in the most recent past is that we study the situation. We do some background on the person who's applied for the permit. And then we make a more informed decision based on what we've learned about that person and about any previous involvement in this sort of venture. So that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to talk about that. I'm here to ask the applicant a few questions. And again, you know, our goal is to not make an arbitrary decision as to whether or not we're going to issue this permit, but a more informed decision. So with that, I have a few questions to ask.
Mm-hmm. Just address the questions to the board and they will, you know, will ask.
Okay. I have some questions I'd like to ask the applicant. You want me to address those through you?
Yeah, just to address them through the board.
Okay.
You can't hear?
I haven't heard a thing.
I hear you.
Okay. You can't hear me or you can't hear the...
It's a stream of whisper. I haven't heard a word.
Yeah, all right. Well, you know, the situation here is this microphone only records for the public, it seems. It does not amplify my voice. So I think what I'm going to do in the interest of clarity is to stand here in this position, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
We can hear.
And try to project my voice more out into the crowd at the same time, allowing the people who are listening maybe at home to hear what I have to say. Some of the questions have already been answered for me, which is great. And I, I'm not here, I actually envy this, the compassion that this gentleman has for these animals. But one of my biggest concerns is that, and I, and I know, you know, I've talked to the land use director about this is, and I know that you people are very conscientious about that. Decisions that you make often have a direct relationship to our calls for service. So another reason why I'm here tonight. So my concern, going back to what I was saying, my concern is that, is that a facility that breeds dogs in a residential area is only going to serve to cause an increase in our calls for service. I, I understand that Mr. Willett has an app, has a kennel license in the town of Hubbardston. And I understand he has a partner doing business. And I haven't yet heard tonight what that person's name is. And I assume that it's this lady that stood at the mic. And I don't believe, unless I didn't hear it, that she, she didn't identify herself. And I'd like to know her identity.
She, we, she did. We had to ask.
Well, then I apologize. I didn't hear.
Okay. Does it have his name? You...
Cindy Phillips.
Cindy Phillips, okay. And you, and this is, this is the applicant's partner in this kennel venture or this dog breeding venture, I understand? Is that true?
I believe that is correct. I'll ask. That is correct.
Does this person have any intention on living at this Lunenburg address on the application? On Fire 12?
Absolutely.
And do you presently, or did you live at 124 Barry Road?
Yes.
Are those, the, are there any dogs at 124 Barry Road presently?
Yes, we have kennels.
Right. And who owns those dogs?
Both of them. The Connaught.
Well, have you or your partner Cindy Phillips ever been the subject of an injunction in Worcester District Court, Housing Court, or a complaint or received a noncriminal citation relating to the breedership or ownership of a dog?
At Comet Pond location.
At any of the locations in Hubbardston?
It was at the Comet Pond location.
Many years ago.
Early 2000.
And what was the outcome of that?
Mile reduced in kennel permit.
Why was that?
Because I couldn't put up a fence fast enough.
And how many, how many dogs did you have when you were cited?
We had a permit for eleven. We had to do a ten on the property.
We had ten, yeah.
Then we reduced to six. And then we were able to put up a fence. Previously, there was no fence. The kennel would open. When it was an issue, we closed it, dealt with what the town asked us to do. We just didn't get it done in time. It was almost a month late by the time we got the fence up in place.
And that was the only reason?
So that was the only violation.
Was that the only reason?
That we're aware of.
And that was a month after?
Actually, what happened is I went to the building inspector in town, told him I needed more time. He said it wouldn't be a problem. Go to the meeting, the report. I went to the meeting and they shut me down and said, "Absolutely not", after being told it wouldn't be a problem by the building inspector, who was who I was talking to about all this. And he misinformed me.
So how long, how much time transpired before you were cited? How much time transpired before you corrected the...
Before I got the fence up?
Before you corrected the infractions?
At least a couple of months.
No, longer than that. Yeah. I don't remember exactly.
Was it, was it a month, two months, a year?
I'd say four to six months, somewhere in there.
Four to six months? Okay, well, it says here in 2010, July 28th, you were cited. In 2011, three kennels found in violation of the bylaw on the side yard setbacks. Seven dogs, not including the four eight-week-old puppies. The kennel operation was limited to six dogs, including personal pets. And that was in 2011. In 2012, was in contempt of the order, feared to comply with a special permit, relocate any kennels located within the required setbacks, reduce the number of dogs to two, four, four or fewer. And a subsequent audit by the building inspector revealed eight rottweilers were found on the property. The building inspector reported that. He wasn't allowed to go into the upper part of the house to count other dogs. 2013, still in contempt of the housing court order, reduce the number of dogs. Well after the contempt order, the cages still remained within the setbacks and seven dogs remained on the property. Is that true? Or not?
We had the inspectors.
I, is it true? Is that true?
I'm not sure. We were in compliance with the dog officer came out.
Okay. Were there any, were there any other complaints that were received? Or were you the subject or any other complaints? Any complaints regarding these dogs in either location?
Of complaint, like...
Any kind of complaint?
Sure.
There's always complaints.
Right.
Somebody can call the police department and complain and make a, make a report.
But there's no written citations from the dog officer in town in Hubbardston currently.
I'd like to do.
If there is, they didn't get to me. I actually just spoke to the dog officer about six weeks, eight weeks ago.
Cindy Phillips, 55-year-old, Boston, 105th Road. One, two, three.
And when is that?
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. These are tickets.
When?
This was in 2009.
Okay. Like I said.
Eleven. Eleven tickets.
And a lot of those violations were due to kennels being on the neighbor's property that we had in agreement.
Those were unlicensed, all unlicensed dogs. Oh, yeah. That's what the ticket says, unlicensed dogs. On 8/2, the police responded to your house. 8/2 or 14 at 124 Barry Road, where a neighbor complained that his, your dogs were threatening his dogs. The neighbor was afraid of your dog's threatening posture, was concerned about his threatening posture and was concerned for the safety of his grandchildren. The neighbor said that he wouldn't be afraid to shoot your dog. And that was on 2014. Five years later, the police responded to your house for report of a barking dog. The police officer states in his report, "I'm familiar with the address because I've been called to the residence in the past for similar complaints. The complainant told the officer that he..." The complainant told the officer that he was concerned with the potentially dirty conditions. He told the officer that the complainant threatened to put bullets in your dog's head, that he sounded like he was exceptionally angry, and he might snap and actually shoot your dogs. The officer then spoke to the complainant again. The complainant admitted that he told you, if your dogs were on his property and he felt he needed to protect himself or his family, would shoot your dogs. Now, why was he so mad that he wanted to shoot your dogs?
We've had several issues with Tony.
I want to ask you a question. Why was he so angry, in your words?
There's more to it than the dogs, let's put it that way.
Well, I don't doubt that.
Once was a dog in his area.
That he might snap, why would that make him that angry? Was it true that your dogs were barking excessively, and that maybe what, what made him angry? And then on 9/30 and 19, only a couple of months ago, the police began to respond to your house, same neighbor called the police because he complained about the dogs barking often, and for long periods of time, this was the neighbor's wife, not him. The officer noted that the woman was visibly, visibly upset when she began to tell him that the owner's daughter, your daughter, drove by her and gestured that she was holding a gun. The police questioned you and your daughter, and your daughter said, it wasn't a gun, it was my finger. You have any comments on that?
That did occur.
No.
Did it occur?
It did occur.
Other than that, because they threatened to shoot her dog, she was visiting with her dog.
The Hubbardston Police Department has gone to Tony's house several times and told him, if he ever infrers the use of a gun to shoot a dog on my property or his property, that he will be arrested.
I don't doubt it, and the gentleman said that, in, in light of what the officer told him, he probably wouldn't do that then.
Oh, really?
But my question is, what makes a person so mad, so angry, that they're gonna threaten to shoot your dogs?
Is that it, Nick?
Yeah.
He was well intoxicated, as the officer said. We, I, Tony built my house, one of my next door neighbors, he built my house in 1989.
So, you sent around this letter to all of the residents on Fire Road 12, right?
Yes, in response to the letter that was sent around.
And you said in this letter, um, for one thing, you said, this is not a business. However, in the sixth paragraph of this letter, you wrote, those pups are all on deposit. In the application, you wrote under the use heading, the kennel will not be open to the public, rather, individual pre-screen deployments will be scheduled for potential buyers.
Correct.
Buyers, from Monday through Friday, during the hours at 10 and 4. That sounds like a business to me. Is that not a business? 10 to 4, I got hours, I got business hours, you can come buy a puppy.
No, it's not an open door business. We only allow people, we mean those hours to come visit us. They call us.
Then it.
Nobody can show up at our home as a customer, say, oh yeah, this is where you live, I'm gonna come see you. It never happens, ever. You are invited to our home.
And then.
After being screened, and we, we turn away 30, 35% of the people that they don't convince us on the phone or at our home that they qualify for that. It's not a business, if it was, we'd sell every puppy going out to the door. We turn these away, we have puppies that are found in the PTSD program. We have gone into therapy, we're worried for, we have them in specially autistic homes, we have specially physical homes, we have dogs in, in service training.
Did you, did you, you're not answering my question, you're just rambling on here. In the second to last paragraph of this letter, you said, in the inference of the BBB, whatever that is.
That is true.
Yeah, we had two complaints that were issued in the last 38 years, were both resolving negative findings from the BBB. As to the regional ACO violation to the original kennel located on Comet Pond for a late application for the annual permit in time, so what does that mean?
That is just what you, you just told us about the fence, that were those violations because he did not get the fence up in time, so.
So it was pending.
And that kind of went on for like, what, two or three years?
It went on for a long time, because it was back and forth.
So let me direct your attention to this complaint. The one you spoke about where Sergeant Saray went to your house, and another young officer.
Yes.
You said, right here in front of these people, that Sergeant Saray went in and said he couldn't hear the dog bark, is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
And then he left, right? And he said, everything's great, you got Marities, I had Marities, everything's cool. However, according to his report, it says, following the incident, dispatch informed Sergeant Saray, uh, Willett called wanting to speak to him. Willett informed Sergeant Saray, he observed one of the dogs to be continuing to bark on the cage cameras. So he, he said he removed the barking dog from the property to prevent further issues.
Correct.
So you said the dog wasn't barking, then he leaves, and you call dispatch and say, oh, I saw the camera, the dog was barking, so the dog was barking. I just wanted to clear that up in my complaint.
I'm trying to keep it, just trying to keep it in contact.
I just want to clean, clear that up in the complaint.
Okay, Officer Redd showed up, he, Rick, here's his written report, he said that he did not hear any dogs barking until he came up to the kennel. We have a new female lab that had been there for two days, she did not get used to the new system, so we removed it, there was a problem, we solved it. We're trying to do the best we can to solve any problem, we're trying to do the best we can to answer questions directly.
I, uh, I would just like to say that, based on my investigation, there will be no permit issued by us. He'll have to go through the appeal process there, and when he does, I'm gonna bring everything I can with me, or everything I have with me, because I'm not gonna allow this to happen if this person's gonna be, and it has proven to be, this is a history lesson, as I said. History has shown that they're not responsible enough to have a kennel. So that's my stand on this, and if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to ask, or answer.
Do we have any questions for Chief Moreno while he's at the mic?
So, um, they had made, made a mention of, I'm, uh, that it was not a, a breeding, it was not a business, but it was some type of kennel, uh, I'm.
Personal dog.
Personal kennel permit.
Personal kennel, could you explain that a little bit to us?
I can't, he must have took that out of a policy.
Out of what? I'm sorry?
Okay, I thought you had mentioned that, it was something that they mentioned from a state statute.
It could be in the policy, I guess, in the dog, the animal control policy.
Okay, animal control policy.
Might be explained.
Control policy, he's talking.
I think that's what he was referring to.
The general law is section 140. They adopted every one of their.
What's this, what's the, uh, section, 1, chapter 140?
140, section 126A.
127A?
I have them both in there, one is literally.
137A?
Copy from the other, it defines, uh, professional dog breeding kennels.
What's the section?
It defines boarding kennels. Sorry, I can't hear.
I want to make sure I'm on the same page. 140, commercial breeder, personal kennel.
Did you bring it up here, leave it with Lisa?
I did, that's fine, I'm sorry.
Jim, do you want this here?
This is why I need some minutes.
There are four different definitions for kennels. A veterinarian has to have a kennel license. Someone that does boarding has to have a kennel license. Someone that does professional breeding has to have a kennel license. Somebody that has a personal kennel license.
One of the ways you're trying to is a description of different kennels, what, what we only, uh, governs is 137A, person maintaining a kennel shall obtain a kennel license, and I'll leave a copy of that with you.
That gives a definition of a kennel, and then subsequently we break them down into different categories, and they all have a different need, as well as a different licensing procedure.
See, they, one of the, one, one of the reasons that, we have to keep up with the times, and that's one of the reasons that we're trying to revamp this whole permitting system.
I understand.
What's happening is, in, in this town, we're almost in excess of 12,000 people, this isn't Lunenburg from 1962, when people bred dogs on a farmland, or when there's neighbors, there's no contingent neighbors, that was probably okay, because they weren't bothering anybody. But in this day and age, houses are on top of each other, and in this case, that house is surrounded by three, water on three sides, it's at the end of a street, it's a tiny little postage stamp lot, it's not a good place to do that. That's gonna cause the police department a lot more work, a lot more calls for service, and that's what I really want to emphasize to this board.
So, Chief, before you leave, it's so, in my understanding is, is so, in a hypothetical world, if we were to approve the special permit, it still has to go to you to approve whether you give the applicant a kennel license? Is that what happened?
That's correct.
Okay.
Going to the bylaw.
Okay.
If he wants to appeal it, he can appeal it to the SLIC.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for the chief?
I'm hearing none, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy, did you want to speak, or have you spoken to everything?
Okay.
Okay. Hearing that, um, I do want to open it up to the public, um, if anybody from the public would.
We have the other hearing.
Oh yeah, I, we do have another hearing, though, I asked that we would, um. There was an 8 o'clock continuance that I mentioned at 8 o'clock, um, are the attorneys for the Julesia?
The Jules.
Oh. Um, are you okay if we continue, uh, on this hearing until, uh, we get through the public and go through this? Well, we could.
At your discretion.
We could actually, huh? There's only two things we could do, we would like to, to just continue this and get this done. If not, what we would do is, we would actually continue theirs till after we finish with the yours. But both hearings are, you know, I think we're down in the public on this one. I would like to complete it if, if that's okay.
It's at your choice.
Right. What I, what I would ask is that, um, if anyone from the public is coming up to speak, if you have already had your letter read, or if it's already gone over, um, and, and if you would just summarize very quickly. Attorney Bowen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Robert Bowen, I happen to be a resident at 1686 Mass Ave, but I am here tonight because I represent the Whisks, who are resident at 98 Fire Road 12, they're an immediate abutter. If, if the chairman would permit, I have copies of a memo that I'd like to submit, and then I'll just, I'll just briefly summarize it, I won't read the whole thing, may I?
Yes.
That's one original that has all the exhibits, and then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 12 pieces of board.
Thank you.
As I said, I'm not gonna read everything verbatim, but let me just summarize a few points. First, a, a couple of global points. They, they have characterized this kennel structure, and I use the word "structure" deliberately, as a fence. It's not a fence, we know, we know what a fence is. It is a structure, it is a kennel. Just because it is composed of fence panels, as they describe it, doesn't make it a fence. A perimeter fence, a boundary fence, those are fences, and those are exempt from structure and building requirements under the zoning law. A kennel is a structure, and it has to comply. Their application doesn't address that at all. I don't know if they meet setback requirements. I don't know if another structure is allowed on this lot. They haven't, they haven't addressed any of that, because they've characterized the kennel as a fence, so I think their application is deficient on that basis. Second, this sort of dichotomy between a license, which the chief was talking about, which is in the purview of the animal control, and a permit, a special permit, which is in the purview of this board to grant, are, are two different things, and the applicant seems to be conflating them a little bit. I appreciate that there is a state law definition of different types of kennels, uh, but looking at your zoning ordinance, there's not. There's, there's a kennel, and this is a kennel, and they need to get a special permit from you, whether it's business, not business, personal, hobby, whatever it is, in order to do it, regardless of what the chief may or may not do, they need a permit from you. We've also heard tonight from Matt Morrow, that they need to go to conservation, to get approval by conservation. We've also heard from Adam Bernie, which I didn't appreciate before that was read tonight, that they also need site plan review. That, that hasn't been applied for. But let me address the, the business issue. I don't want to belabor what has been said here, but I do point out, there is a deed restriction, we think it is enforceable, and it says that this is residential, and there aren't any businesses that are allowed. The definition of business doesn't turn on whether there's a profit or not a profit. It, it may not be a very profitable business, and I get that sometimes we do engage in business activities as a labor of love because we like it, but they're advertising the site, they're selling puppies, uh, this is a business. It may not be a very profitable one, but they're charging money, they're making money, they're spending money on business activities. It's a business, and there's a deed restriction, we don't think it's permitted. In the event that the board, though, doesn't find any of those things to be dispositive, I want to briefly address the four factors that you do have to consider when you're granting a special permit. You have complete discretion, even if they could arguably meet these four factors, if you think it's inappropriate for this neighborhood, you can still make the determination, as long as you're not acting arbitrarily and capriciously, but we think that they don't meet at least three of the four criteria. The first criteria is that, um, it's not injurious to the public health or hazardous because of traffic or otherwise, and I want to emphasize the otherwise. We've heard a lot about the dangerousness of the dogs, and whether you can consider that or not consider that, uh, I'm not gonna repeat all of that, but I don't think they've been completely forthcoming about, uh, the health and aggressiveness issues of their dogs, and to the, the submission, I've attached a number of complaints that I found online, not just from the Better Business Bureau, but other rottweiler-related sites, uh, that talk about health issues with some of the dogs, aggressive issues with some of the dogs, and even one immediate abutter to one of the sites, that talks about the god-awful odor, that's not quite how he put it in his complaint, uh, that was coming from the waste from the dogs. So, there are, there are issues, and there are complaints, uh, so we think that it is going to be hazardous to the neighborhood. We don't know about the lake, and we're concerned about that, but you've heard those concerns from, uh, the, the Board of Health as well. Not have a material adverse effect on the property values or other amenities of the neighborhood. Rottweilers ring alarm bells, it, this is, a kennel of any kind, though, is gonna affect the property values in this small, quiet, bucolic lake neighborhood. Nobody wants to move next to a kennel on a lake, they're going to the lake to enjoy the peace and quiet of the lake, it, it will affect the property values. I was also gonna talk about the, the Hubbardston history, uh, but the chief has already covered that, I don't have to go into that. I have attached to my, my submission, a copy of the court order in joining them at the, the old location, Hubbardston, from engaging any activities there. They say they have some kind of a permit at the new location, uh, but it is a residential neighborhood, and according to the Land Use Office, uh, there's no special permit or anything, so, uh, they may have some kind of a license, but I have no idea whether they're in compliance with zoning at the new location. The third thing you have to consider is the orderliness and sightliness of the operations. I, I tend to concede this one, because on the papers, it looks like that's going to be okay, but it looks. but it looks can be deceiving. If you were to even consider allowing this type of a business in this residential neighborhood, it can't look like a business. Like any home occupation, you can't have outside storage. You can't, it can't look not residential, and the potential for that is there. Even now, as we speak, unless it's been removed in the last 24 hours, there's a large storage pod on the property. I don't know if that's intended to be permanent or if that's just temporary, but it needs to be, if you're going to even consider this, it needs to be conditioned on no outside storage. And then, lastly, the proposed action will not produce, and the two I'm going to focus on are noise and odor observable at the lot lines. We've done some brief research, which I've also attached, which indicates that dogs bark at, the average dog, between 80 and 90 decibels. A kennel with a concentration of dogs can be as loud as 95 to 115 decibels. By way of comparison, a motorcycle sound is 90 decibels, so this has the potential to be loud. We don't think it's appropriate for that neighborhood, but that's something that needs to be controlled. Likewise, the odor, we know of at least one complaint where there was an odor, that needs to be controlled. We don't know how you're going to be able to do either of those things with so many dogs in such a small space, so we don't think it's appropriate at all. And lastly, and I will not read them all here into the record, you have them submitted in front of you. If none of this is persuasive to you and you still think this is a good idea, I have a list of conditions that we think at a minimum would have to be present to even consider this. Again, we don't think it's appropriate at all for many of the reasons that were discussed and the ones that I've summarized, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board has as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Attorney Bowen?
I don't have any questions.
No, I'm listening to the chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any others from the public?
Jim Lavoy, 152 Flynn Road. I had a lot of things I was going to say, and I'm going to skip over them to move this through, because everything I've heard, some of the things I was going to say would just be duplication and not worth it. But a couple of things I did want to, just the simple fact, from my perspective, is that I've owned dogs, I've had dogs all my life, don't have one right now, but I have dogs all my life, love dogs, they're fine. But dogs do two things. They bark and they defecate. Those two things we all know they're going to do. As far as barking is concerned, anybody who's lived on a lake, anybody who's been around a lake knows that sound travels across the lake. There's no trees to blotter it, there's no hills to border it. I mean, I can sit on my porch, and I can hear people talking on the boat way on the other side of the lake. Dog barking, we used to have a couple of dogs in the neighborhood that crossed the lake from us, I should say. We used to call them yip and yap, because all we could ever hear was yip, yap, yip, yap, yip, yap. Drove us out of our minds because it came directly across the lake. I don't know where yip and yap are, they don't seem to be around, so that's not a problem, but they're gone. But the second thing is the defecation. I mean, they can say they're going to clean it up, they can say they're going to pick it up, but I mean, all it takes, you just go in and just type in "dog feces and lakes," and the stuff you come up with is just incredible. And from Solitude, the company that takes care of most of the lakes, they talk in here about when there's a concentration, its stormwater runoff allows it to easily flow into the lake, pond, or other water body. This is a health concern for humans as well as other organisms that might come in contact with the water. E. coli, Giardia, Salmonella are just a few of the bacteria found in dog feces, and parasites such as roundworms, hookworms, and I can't even pronounce that word, are also present. All of these can be transported in dog waste and are easily transferred to humans and other animals. Dog feces that enter the water through runoff also introduces an increased amount of nutrients into lakes and ponds. The increased addition of these nutrients may lead to more severe algae blooms or other water quality problems. The cyanococcus bacteria, commonly called blue-green algae, are a growing concern in our water bodies. And anyone who knows anything that puts, what's been going on at Lake Shirley, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, and the Lake Shirley Improvement Corporation have been going round and round about how to deal with the fact that we're having problems with water quality at the lake. So if you were to take an aerial view of Lunenburg and look down on it and say, "Where would it make sense to put a kennel?" One of the first things you'd say is, "Well, let's keep it the hell out, 200 feet away, 200 yards away from a water body of any kind." And they are talking about putting it on here. It just absolutely makes no sense. The rest of it I'll skip over. I just want to go over a couple of points of things that I was listening to tonight as people were talking. First of all, the number of dogs. They say they're looking for six plus two total. You look on their website, they've got six females and six males, six females. I mean, they've got a website. They're out there trying to sell dogs, and they've got 12 dogs showing on the website. Two of them are shown as retired. Those are the two that I'm sure that are staying with them inside of the house. But where's the rest of them going? There's 12 here, and then add puppies to that. One thing I was disappointed in tonight, and one thing that really did bother me was your comments or your reading of what was said by the town boards and the Conservation Commission. Board of Health came out and said, "Well, the things that I'm saying, it doesn't make sense to put this on the shore of a lake, any lake, any water body." Conservation seemed to jump over it. I don't understand that. Conservation should have been jumping up and down. It makes absolutely no sense to put something like this on a water body. Enforcement, how, if you were to ever give a permit, how would it be enforced? Who's going to go down there and check to see whether they've been picking up the dog feces? Who's going to go down and check and see how many dogs they have? Who's going to make the decision as to how many puppies they can have at a given time? Who's going to do that? We have no mechanism in town to deal with anything like that, so that makes no sense. Autism, I was a little bothered by that. Really disturbs me when people use a disability like autism as a reason to give them something. I have an autistic grandson. My brother is an expert in the field, nationally known, has written books and videos about it. But don't use that as a reason why we should be allowing you to have dogs on Lake Shirley. That's insulting to me. Lastly, if they're so in love with these dogs, and this is their hobby, and this is everything that they want to do, then why didn't they find a property that was conducive to what they're doing? Something that's away from the water, something that's in a rural area with a large piece of land. Why come into our neighborhood and decide that they're going to change our living, our lifestyle? The whole thing is idiotic. I, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know that I, my name is John Teta. I live at 135 Flynn Road. It's the road to the north of the property in question here that's owned by the petitioner. You also know I used to be on this board, so I'm sort of familiar with what you do. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you know about lake living. You live on a lake. I don't know if your colleagues here are familiar with what it's like there, but we pay significant costs in values of our property and corresponding taxes to have the serenity, to not have traffic, to not have a lot of neighbors close by. We value the privacy created by this buffer, and I really hate to see it disturbed. Having served on this board in the past, I'm aware of the criteria that governs the special permits, and I'll address a couple of the issues. Noise is one. My property is 650 feet from the petitioners. In this past year, with my bad hearing, I'll say, I could hear heavy equipment working on that property during the day. And I was normally inside at night, but I have other neighbors that have talked to me about hearing dogs barking at odd times. Security is the other. There are two small dogs on my street, smaller than that trash can over there, and my daughter visits with cats, my niece visits with a two-year-old, and the small dogs and the cats have crossed the ice in the past. So I think it's possible that any other dog in the neighborhood could cross that ice. And I think other residents share this concern, and they're just not, well, I think it's some of the comments there. I recall this board discussing that, we used to discuss the negative impact upon the petitioner if you don't grant the permit. Well, in this case, the petitioner has other locations where he's doing this operation. So he's basically asking for a permit for convenience. I don't think we would call it hardship if he was denied the permit. And one last item here, they talked about the deed provision, and the petitioner said it was back in the 90s. I have a copy of a deed here, 2013, that has that provision in it. If you'd like, I'll be happy to give you the copy.
Will you have one? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak from the public?
Hi, my name is Cindy Lee Gee, and I live at 140 Flynn. I am an immediate neighbor to the proposed kennel. The length of our home is facing the property. We hear the dogs barking in every room of our house. We hear it over the noise of the bumbling washing machine, over the noise of the TV. We hear it 6:00 a.m. every morning. We don't like to get up at 6:00 a.m. We're retired. I can tell you, I was asked how many, to write down all of the dates of all of the times the dogs were barking, and to be honest with you, that list would have been longer than Santa Claus's naughty list. It just was too long. I can tell you, the day I slept in, two days in a row, December 20th, when those dogs were moved somewhere else other than outside, on the lakeside, where we could hear them. So it is peaceful now, ever since the notice for the zoning board has come out, and we appreciate that. We tried to let the dogs acclimate to the neighborhood and be fair, but it just never happened. They still keep barking. I did call the police when it overwhelmed our family. What I did not know was anonymous calls don't count. Today, I was asked to talk about the calls so that there was a record of it. So although I've been intimidated by seeing him break an LCC member during another meeting, I am going to speak up. One of the calls was after three hours of barking. My gut said something was wrong. It's not right. I called and I heard, I called the police. I heard later from a neighbor on Fire Road 12, Joe, Whisk, and he said he could confirm that a pregnant dog had been brought to the 110 location, was in distress from being relocated, and because of an anonymous call, the dog was removed by Cindy Phillips, and we thank you for taking care of that dog now. Unfortunately, those calls are not usable by the police or the courts. I didn't leave my name. I was intimidated, but now I know I must speak up for myself and my family. This kennel is not a fair and reasonable request for this tight residential neighborhood or the lake as a whole. I understand this is something the owner has done in the other places for many years, but life is different now, and life on the lake is different. The application states the property is on the end of the road. The plan says nothing about the lake and how it will impact everyone who lives here and visits here. We all vote, and we will pass by the property. The visual impact, the barking, and perhaps the smell from the summer heat will be there daily. The public access has to go by his house. They have to go towards his property to have it deep enough for their canoes and kayaks to pass through. Our side is shallow, very shallow. We invite all of our lovely friends to come, and their two-year-olds, and their one-year-olds, and they swim there, and they like sit in the water. If that kennel is there, that destroys our enjoyment of our home. It makes little children hearing it, smelling it, like he said himself, the dogs won't see them, but he could smell people, he could smell the boaters coming. He's going to hear us, they're going to hear us, having a party at the fire pit area. We've only lived here three years. It was very peaceful and quiet then, and we haven't had problems. Now, we've had nothing but problems. We have tried to be reasonable, we've tried to be fair. On this lake, too many of us have worked tirelessly to improve and save the lake. Things have changed on this lake for the better. The past is gone. Today, we are working as a village, and we are looking out for each other, and I'm happy to see so many people here from the lake. We know polite communication, listening, and respect for our neighbors will make life easier and will make everyone feel accepted. I say no to this kennel, it's not a good fit, but we welcome you to the lake, and we hope that you can do as other people on the lake have done and take the kennel outside of the lake neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak from the public?
My name is Donna Rayno. I live at 142 Flynn Road, and Cindy is my direct neighbor. We're talking quality of life. This is a problem for a lot of us in this room and people that have written to you. I have heard those dogs at 6:00 in the morning. I know, because I'm up at 6:00 in the morning out in my yard. They have great hearing. I go in the front of my house, I hear them when I pull out my trash. The last couple of weeks, I haven't heard them, but from my understanding here, they've been brought inside. Cindy and Mike live right next door to me, and they can hear everything. I walk down by the water, I can hear everything. I am very concerned about the water quality. I have a dog. I love dogs. I don't like to see breeding of animals for any reason. I've had two people with disabilities in my family, both blind and can't hear. I get it. But there's a place for it, and my feeling is that it doesn't belong on the patch of land, and that is a patch of land, because his mother allowed me to pull my boat in there one time, and that's a small patch of land, if you've ever been down there. It's got a house, and it's got a garage. So I just hope that you don't allow this to go through, because this is our quality of life, and I don't think any one of you would want it in your neighborhood next to your house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Tina Cody. I live at 107 Flynn Road, Fire Road 11, and I'm right directly across from the situation. I just wanted to go on record to say that I am against a kennel being put here because of the noise and whatever else has been said already. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, would... One more.
Good evening. Nathan Caddish, 605 Reservoir Road. I just want to point out that the feces problem is probably my largest concern for our body of water. The Board of Health has been a little difficult to work with, though they've gotten much better recently. Thank you to them. The concern that I, or thing that I ask is that if I was to put some peat rock down in my backyard, put some walls around it, could I invite a bunch of my friends to come over and urinate and defecate on that peat rock there, and that not be considered a cesspool? I have, the septic system on our property is a very modern system. It runs two pumps that cost us about $70 in electricity a month. We have to send a report for $100, every year, $100 report, because the effluent or the liquid that gets dispersed in our yard needs to meet specific criteria in order to be a safe septic system. And I just worry about that, the fish, our water, all of the concerns for our environment that could be posed by those dogs. And I have a dog. I love him very much, Cooper. He's a Labrador. I also have a stick-built home that's got two-by-four construction with blown-in insulation, and when I pull my car into the driveway, I can hear my dog bark. So I don't know what technology there is that absorbs that sound, but I know my stick-built home doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? With that, I'm going to cut off. One more.
You almost didn't make it.
You almost didn't make it.
Almost. Caitlin Caddish, 605 Reservoir Road. I think everyone's pretty much said what my concerns are. My only other thing is that this summer I helped Larry when he had crashed into some rocks. He had his dogs on the boat with him. I had my Black Lab with me. I helped him just to be helpful. His dogs were very aggressive towards my dog. Maybe it was situational, but he could not get his dogs under control. I asked my dog to sit. He stayed. It is concerning to have that many dogs in a small area on a dead-end road with children and other dogs and families.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, one more.
Hi, I'm Larry Stone over at 20 Johnson Street. And just the only one here, but I know some of our other neighbors were concerned too. You know, it's across, across the water from us, not too far away. And my concern is the same that the chief and the other people tonight voiced. So it's an awful lot of houses that are affected, like it's been said over and over with the lake. And yeah, like the last gentleman was addressing, it was addressed by the Board of Health. There's an issue for the environment. You know, I work for a septic company. We do 150 systems a year and over 800 Title V inspections a year and that's certainly concerning. The whole reason the Title V laws were changed in 1996 was the Wachusett Reservoir was getting polluted up there. And, and you all know that there's no houses on that reservoir. All the coliform bacteria and nitrates is coming in from the watershed area. So you don't, you don't have to be as close as we're talking about this kennel to pollute, you know? It's just gonna get there all the quicker. But you know, any added pollution like that is definitely adding to the problems that we have at the lake already. And that's, I'm glad the Board of Health was, chimed in on this too. So thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, anybody else? Nope, you already spoke. So I'm gonna cut off public discussion. I'm gonna bring it to the board. Okay. I, I think we've, we've heard an awful lot here tonight. A lot of interest and a lot of good information that came to the board from a lot of sources. We have a lot of input. So I think, in my mind, I think this is a business. It is a commercial use. This is a residential neighborhood. I don't think it's the right location for this kennel. And with that, I would like comments.
I'd like to thank everyone for attending and all the nice comments that they had and the chief's input and attorney Bowen's input also. I agree with you that I believe it is a business. It apparently has been a business for a long time in, in Hubbardston. And I think there are a lot more places available, even across the street from where I live, is an old farmhouse. That it would be more appropriate for a place like that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I look at, I took special note to the comments from the chief and the animal control officer, what they were feeling. And you know, my, my feeling is, is based on their, I think the first hurdle for the applicant is convincing them. Because I don't think it really matters what we do if they're not gonna grant it. We're just, all we're doing is setting a precedent for others to come by. So I think at first, even before we, if we look at it, it's mainly the animal control and the police, that permit is more important than whatever we have.
Right. And I, and I also don't believe that they have satisfied the conditions that we must find.
Right.
So with that.
Yeah, I agree with everything you've said. I think the plan is pretty good and you know, I think there are some good things in that plan. But plans are just that. And I think the things that the chief brought up, obviously, I didn't know that before tonight. So those things do concern me.
I mean, I don't question that they, they love the breed. I don't question how they, they raise them or anything like that. It's just not the right location, the right area, and it cannot satisfy the conditions.
I agree, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments? Then I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not grant the special permit.
No, the special permit, based on the findings.
Based on the findings and the, and the input from the, the different board, the different officers and boards in town.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to deny and we have a second. Favor?
No. Favor of the motion?
The motion to deny.
Aye.
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 Aye. The motion is denied. The, the petition is denied for the special permit. I will tell you that a copy of the board's decision shall be filed within, that a town clerk within 14 days. And any party that is agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk.
Do you have to read the conditions?
No, deny. And with that, we thank you all for coming. We thank you all for your input.
And feel free to stay for the next meeting if you want.
And we truly apologize for the next hearing.
I'll get up with you for a second. Anybody prepared for each moment?
Sure. Thank you.
Folks, if you'd like to talk, if you could please talk outside, we have another hearing.
Oh, hold on. Folks, can we ask you, if you're not gonna be part of the second hearing, could you please step outside to have the conversations? We appreciate you here, but, and we'd rather you stay for the next meeting, but that's your choice. They've waited very long.
That doesn't work. We'll bring up the knife.
We've got a box cutter.
We've got a box cutter for you too, if you need that.
Is a box cutter?
Faces in the bathroom, like utility knife.
I put this there like my second time here.
Oh, really?
Still sitting there.
I just was trying to get it under the table.
Mr. Chairman, is there a doctor or a medic? Somebody's fallen on the stairs.
Al?
Al.
Is there a doctor or a medic around? Someone's fallen on the stairs?
Call, call the.
Is the chief still here?
Is the chief still?
He left about five minutes ago.
Did somebody call or?
I got a feeling we're not getting.
Surprised that my wife is still awake now. Does it touch the stairs? Doesn't seem overly hot.
Okay. So the other one is, I just got back last night from, we did a trip to Providence. Thirty-nine dollars each way.
Wow. Eighty bucks round trip? Eighty bucks round trip?
Yeah, but basically the idea is like, you know, check a bag of forty bucks. But I was gonna say, for the kids, it's like, okay.
Five bathing suits and five t-shirts.
For the five B?
For me.
No, but even what do you need five, right? Nobody's gonna see you, but maybe you need to, right?
Keep it, give it track.
Okay. Did everyone get one of these?
Yeah, this is all, all on this. We really do apologize to all of you. It seldom happens.
I mean, you needed to do that. You needed to give it the time. You needed to hear the public comment. There wasn't any choice.
Well, you live across the lake from them too, so you know exactly what's going on.
We know how sound carries.
In feces.
I must say, I used to go to Florida and I was like, oh. The property was easy.
Yeah, with the Afghani set?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So the only thing I could have done different though is I probably would have done a hotel room under the stairs.
Yeah, I know, I went out.
So I could have stayed that night and then would have given me free parking, you know, so I would have paid for hotel. Did you want me to read this?
I will ask the attorney if he wants us to read it into or do you want to summarize it?
I believe in the, in the last meeting, we had closed at the conclusion of my comments. Sue and Perry were about to give statements. It's been a month. If I could have five minutes to recap briefly and then go into Sue and Perry and then obviously turn things over to the Lux.
Yeah, that would be fine. Do you want Lisa, the secretary to read that in or do you want us to?
I'll summarize the, the points that I made in the.
Thank you.
All right, at this, all right, at this point then, what I'm gonna do is, this is a continuance, just for the people at home and everybody. This is a continuance from a hearing from December 11th. Reintroduce the board and make one comment. This is a, first I'll tell you that, this is a continuation of hearing from December 11th. This is an appeal from a person agreed by the decision of the building commissioner that the six-foot fence as constructed is not in violation of the zoning bylaw as written. The fence sits upon 30 Sunset Lane parcel and borders the Jewel's driveway easements. The holder of legal title on 30 Sunset Lane is Carl Phyllis Locke. And I will reintroduce the board quickly. To my left is Lisa Norman and the board's secretary, I'm Alfred Grival. This is James Azakowski, Hans Winthrop, Dave Blatt, and Pat Callahan. And one thing I gotta point out as well, as you see tonight, we have five members now. The fifth member was able to make it tonight. He has reviewed the first hearing. He has read all the documentation.
I, I've watched it twice, most recently at four o'clock this afternoon.
Appreciate that.
What that allows him to do is participate and as I explained at the other hearing, it would have been, you would have had four out of four. Now you can have one percent. It can be four out of five.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I will, again, as you said, we had left off with you at the poll and we will continue.
Yes. So good evening, Mr. Chairman, Miss Secretary, members of the board. Again, my name is Jess Oyer. I work for the law firm Murphy and King in Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of Sue and Perry Jewel with respect to their petition. As you know, this is a continuation of the prior hearing and it concerns the erection of the stockade fence on 30 Sunset Lane, which abuts Sue and Perry's property at 20 Sunset Lane. And I'm not gonna go through everything that was stated in the last meeting, obviously. I don't wanna take up too much time. But I do want to stress the, the main or the primary argument that we're putting forth in front of the board. And that is that under section 256.601 of the bylaw, the fence must be reduced to no higher than 36 inches in height because it obstructs vision and it, and it is within 20 feet of the nearest street. I will not repeat all of the arguments with respect to obstruction of vision. I think I went through that in detail last time. There were, there are pictures submitted within the petition package. And I think it's fairly clear that the fence, a seven-foot fence, six-foot fence, whatever you wanna call it, it's seven foot from the advantage of the Lux, of the Jewel's property. It clearly obstructs vision, especially when they're in their cars and creates a safety hazard as a result. Again, I'm not gonna get into the details though. What I do wanna focus on is the analysis by which we reach the conclusion that the streets, or that the rights of way rather, are in fact streets under the bylaw. And therefore, this entire question falls under the purview of section 256.601. So first, we have the definition of rights of way, okay? The rights of way at issue, the 16-foot right of way and the 14-foot right of way that serve 20, 22, 30, and 50 Sunset Lane are rights of way under the definition in the bylaw. The bylaw defines a right of way as a way serving property other than that on which it is located. So we know that 20, the, the 16-foot right of way is on town land. It's on parcel number 19 on the assessor's map, which is part of the submission to the, to the board. And the 14-foot right of way sits on 30 Sunset Lane, which is the Lux property at issue. Those two rights of way serve 20 and 22 Sunset Lane. And 30 and 50, I believe, have access, have deeded access to the 16-foot and potentially the 14-foot. I'm not entirely clear. So all four of those properties are served by at least one or both of those two rights of way. Therefore, clearly, the rights of way fit into the definition of right of way under the bylaw insofar as they are ways that serve property other than the property on which they sit. And you have the question of whether these rights of way constitute private ways. A private way as defined under the bylaw is simply any way that is not a public way. So because the rights of way are defined as a way and private way is any way that is not a public way, clearly the rights of way fall within the definition of private way. The next question is, does, do these particular private ways constitute streets? The definition of street in pertinent part is defined as either a public way or a private way in existence when the provisions of the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Lunenburg. Now, as, as I reviewed during the last hearing, these particular private ways.
Just one minute. You can't shut the door.
It has to be open.
If you, just ask them to keep it down.
Ask them to move.
Well, you ask them to go downstairs. Just leave a crack. As long as it's partially open.
Partially open, we're good.
Safety first. I think it should be okay if you, if you all can hear. So I'll, I'll speak up a bit. So here we have two rights of way, which clearly fall within the expansive definition of private ways. And we know that these particular rights of way were in fact in existence prior to Lunenburg's adoption of the subdivision control law because they were established at least as early as 1947, which is shown on the 1947 Reardon Plan attached to the original petition to the court. And we know, no, the court, the, the board, sorry. And we know that the subdivision control law was not adopted in Lunenburg any earlier than 1953 because that's when it was adopted by the state. The state made it optional for towns and cities to adopt the subdivision control law. So Lunenburg could not have possibly adopted it prior to 1953. We know that these were, these rights of way were in existence in at least as early as 1947. Therefore, because they're rights of way under the bylaw, because rights of way are private ways under the bylaw, and because these particular private ways were in existence before Lunenburg's adoption of the subdivision control law, they must be streets under the bylaw, period, end of story. The, the ultimate conclusion then is then, under section 256.601. The, the ultimate conclusion, then, is then, under section two fifty-six point six oh, because the fence obstructs vision and because the rights of way are within twenty feet of those streets, the rights of way are streets, and those streets are within twenty feet of the fence, the fence must be reduced to no more than thirty-six inches in height. Now, this is, this is an inescapable, inescapable conclusion from the language of the bylaw, in my opinion, and I would, I would suggest to the board that that is in fact the case. I know that there were some intimation of ancillary concerns that might arise if the board were to make a decision that, that this did fall within two fifty-six point six point oh. I wanna address those very briefly. Those two concerns seem to fall into, into two categories. So, you have the concern that if the board makes a decision in the Jewel's favor, then there will be a whole slew of enforcement actions that are brought seeking to enforce setbacks or whatnot in relation to these newly designated streets. And with respect to that, I would simply point out again that Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty-eight, Section seventeen has two sunset provisions, provisions which would prevent this from happening. Those two sunset provisions run essentially as follows. If a use or a structure began or, or was constructed prior to ten years of any attempted enforcement action, it's entirely insulated from enforcement under that Section seventeen of Chapter forty-eight. It essentially serves as a statute of limitations. The second sunset provision says that if a use or structure is permitted and continues for at least six years, and the use or structure has been in compliance with the original permit for those six years, again, it's insulated from any enforcement action after six years. So, you have two statutes of limitations here, one ten years, one six years. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anything that was done within the last six years on those properties, and all of the residences were constructed more than ten years ago. So, there's not gonna be an influx of enforcement actions that come because all of these properties are grandfathered in. Any modifications to the properties would be considered modifications to pre-existing non-conforming uses, and again, grandfathered in and protected from enforcement. The second issue was what becomes the town's obligations with respect to caring for these rights of way if they are in fact designated streets? And my answer to the board is absolutely nothing. The town has to do nothing. Streets fall into two categories, public ways and private ways. If these were public ways, the town may be in fact required to plow and maintain them. Because they're private ways, the town is actually prohibited from maintain, from appropriating funds to maintain them absent a vote of the town governing authority, which is, which, and that vote serves only to then place the vote on the ballot to the citizens of the town to vote such, to vote in favor of the town actually caring for and maintaining these private ways. So, simply because private ways and public ways both fall under the general rubric of street or actually only a limited subset of private ways, those in existence prior to the town's adoption of the subdivision control law, because those both fall under the rubric of street, has no consequence with respect to these particular rights, these particular private ways insofar as it concerns the town's obligation to repair them or maintain them. The town will not have to do anything. Nothing changes. Street means nothing with respect to the town's obligation to, to maintain, to maintain any way. The designation of public way or private way is what is the, the operative fact. Here, we're dealing with private ways, therefore, again, there's nothing that changes with respect to the town's obligations. That's essentially my recap of the most important part of, the most important relief that the Jewel's are requesting from the board, and that is, in fact, the reduction of the fence in, to a height no greater than thirty-six inches. And we think that that is derived very clearly and grounded very solidly in the language of the bylaw itself. And there are no, you know, ancillary concerns that the board is faced with if it makes that decision. And I would respectfully request that the board does in fact base its decision on the language of the bylaw and order that that fence be abated and reduced to no more than thirty-six inches in height. Now, I believe Sue and Perry each have statements they would like to read to the board as well. I would also ask that in, in the event that there's anything that comes up in the Lux presentation, I would have a very brief opportunity to address that at the end.
Okay. Um, while you're there, though, um, do you, are there any questions from the board to their counsel at this time? Want anything?
No, I, I think I understand, but I understand his reasoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then we'll let them speak, and, and we will have your back because I'm sure that there will be some questions.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I know Lisa was distributing the Lux presentation, and I'm not sure if people were quite sure what it was, but, um, I'm sure Mr. Hutton will explain that in detail. We appreciate your, your attention to my life.
Okay, uh, but you'll have to come up to the mic, give your name and address, and say whatever you would like to say.
Hi. Uh, my name is Marilyn Jewell. Um, most people know me by Sue Jewell. I'm gonna read this. I'm not very good at memorizing. So, can you all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Over fifty years ago, I purchased this property with my mom, my dad, and my brother, and my husband. There were three camps, and it took a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and friends to help us make them into three year-round homes. The home we now live in was built by the McCarthy family in nineteen fifty and was built facing what was, at that time, known as Off Flat Hill Road. This is the sixteen-foot right-of-way that extends all the way to the lake and then turned left to a cart path. I'm still in touch with the McCarthy family, who visited me about two years ago. They have given me a lot of information about the lake and property. Therefore, between the McCarthy family and us, there is more than seventy years of use of the sixteen-foot right-of-way in what is now our exclusive driveway easement in front of our home. For years, our homes were the last year-round homes on the road. Off Flat Hill Road was a dirt road at that time, as was the fourteen-foot right-of-way. We plowed off that Flat Hill Road and the surrounding, and the property surrounding our homes. After my parents passed, Perry and I moved into mom and dad's home, which is on the property we are now discussing. My son, daughter-in-law, and my grandson moved into what was our home. We now have the fourth generation living on these properties. I am now enjoying having my grandson next door and watching him grow and enjoying the lake and the property as my parents did with my boys. I have a lot of history at this property, good history, and I would like very much to continue this for my family. With the recent addition of a fence that the Lux have installed, the quality of life here has changed. Our view of the Lunenburg Town property and the sixteen-foot right-of-way has been greatly impaired. Just for a moment, I would like you to see yourself walking out your front door and being faced with a bright yellow stockade fence that is six feet high and eight inches or more off of the ground and is fourteen feet from our front stoop. The fence goes from one end of our exclusive driveway easement to the other end. I am concerned about the safety of my family and visitors who have to back out onto the sixteen-foot right-of-way due to the fence. There are many deliveries to Thirty Sunset Lane, approximately three to four a week, plus oil trucks, propane trucks, which to deliver to all four properties. I sincerely hope the board understands how the fence has unfavorably impacted the enjoyment of our home, the curb appeal, and the property value, and that the board will make a decision with this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you can hand them all to her. Okay, just give them to her, and we'll pass them down. You give them to the secretary. So, you, narrow there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have very brief remarks. We really relied on our counsel to.
Um, I know.
Perry Jewell, Twenty Sunset Lane. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Perry Jewell, Twenty Sunset Lane. We've relied very heavily on our attorney's interpretation of the legal bylaws and the legality of the streets. My, my comments, as my wife's, were really more personal. As you know, we all really try to, um, do the right thing and live a life we can be proud of. And really, such has been the case with this driveway easement all along. And it has a long, long history. In particular, though, for the planning, you know, we retained this professional engineer, Whitman and Bingham and Company, and Jamie Rowe personally supervised that. For prep and paving, um, was Powell Stone and Gravel. And Jeff Powell personally managed the entire project of paving, including the curbs. And Steve was there with him, as was his other right-hand, the third Powell brother, as they call him, uh, riding on the paving equipment that day. In addition, then, we also hired Forever Green Landscaping of Lunenburg and LeMonster, who are very reputable, you know, to do, um, the final finish work around the edges of that driveway. In all of that, really, we tried to take into account managing of stormwater so as to keep all of the stormwater that might come off of our property on our property, and included a, a drain in that plan. The backsides of the curbs were landscaped. And of course, uh, I guess I should mention that, you know, there were various town officials that had been involved in all of this all the way along in numerous discussions. It was really before, you know, the current, uh, uh, it was actually back and began under Mike Savageo. And, uh, we discussed, I think, twice, uh, you know, with Adam Bernie, uh, several discussions on different occasions, uh, uh, you know, with the DPW, you know, Director Jack Rodekins. And, you know, in all those cases, really touched upon all these same things that have come up here. For further clarification, incidentally, the, the particular, um, state law about not plowing these sorts of roads did come up, according to Jack at a town meeting. And, you know, it was discussed, and it was left really pretty much to his discretion that if he could, and he, you know, and it made sense that he could do it. And I know on a couple of occasions, like even our fire road, he has assisted on. It was when Sue's father was, um, ill, as, he had a heart condition. And one time, when I was traveling and out of town, uh, we had an ice storm, and she called him, and he backed, uh, sand and salter down the hill, you know, to make sure that an ambulance could get down there if it needed to. And similarly, there was one other occasion where there was a major snowstorm and the same sort of thing, where he did send a truck down, and they made a pass, and then they, you know, came back out. So, I think, you know, we have a, a great DPW director. And, uh, you know, he is very aware of what, you know, needs to be done to do right by people. So, we have no complaints there at all. From our perspective, um, there is no need for this fence, uh, to be as tall as it is. And, uh, there's no need certainly for it to be as far off the ground as it is and beyond level so high, especially at the sixteen-foot right-of-way. It's within less than three feet of that right-of-way. And that's the major right-of-way that gets most of all the traffic. You know, most importantly, there's no reason, uh, for it to obstruct the view of traffic on both ends of our driveway, our exclusive driveway easement that we lease, uh, in a long-term lease from the Lux. There is also no need to obscure the front of our home and our landscaping, really reducing our home's attractiveness and value. Similarly, the views from inside our home, looking out the kitchen window or the dining room window, is now of the backside of a tall stockade fence with, you know, the ugly side facing us, spoiling our enjoyment, as it did of our family's Thanksgiving dinner that occurred shortly after this was erected, and of Christmas. But of all this, uh, the worst is really the safety issue. The traffic on these two right-of-ways is unpredictable, from very light to considerably heavier when families and friends, uh, visit these homes that are located down here. The scariest actually can be the various UPSs, FedExs, and delivery vehicles which speed down, deliver their package, and then race back up the fire road. There are also, of course, as my wife had mentioned, oil trucks, septic pump trucks, towed boats, and ski-mobile trailers, as well as construction and occasional emergency vehicles. You, the, as the ZBA, of course, have the authority to reduce this nuisance fence to thirty-six inches. And I'm asking that you do so. To me, there should be no question about the viability of the right-of-ways as they have been obstructed. It's very clear that they've been obstructed. There should be no question that our home's value and our enjoyment has been reduced. And I think based upon the legal evidence and, and legal research which has been done, there should be no question that these right-of-ways should be viewed as streets for this purpose of reducing the height of the fence to no more than thirty-six inches within twenty feet of those streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, and with that, um, I would invite the Lux to come up. And I know you presented a packet tonight, so if you would like to just go through that, whatever you would like to say.
Thank you. Uh, Phyllis Luck, Fifty Sunset Lane. Good evening, gentlemen. My husband and I are here tonight to ask the ZBA to uphold the decision of Building Commissioner Burlingame, whose opinion agrees with the longstanding opinions and practices of prior Lunenburg building inspectors on these issues. From the moment we laid eyes on the property at Fifty Sunset, which we call home, we plan to spend the rest of our days here. When we had the opportunity to purchase the property next door at Thirty Sunset in two thousand and five, we renovated this summer cottage in the hopes that Carl's dad would be able to move in. Sadly, he passed away before this could happen. We now hope that our daughter and soon-to-be son-in-law will consider moving in to share this beautiful lakeside existence with us. We have tried our best to be good neighbors. The Jewel's lived in the lakeside house and her mother in the back property at Twenty Sunset when we moved in. When the mother passed away, the home was vacant for years. In two thousand and fourteen, the Jewel's began a renovation project, getting a permit for inside work only. You can see a picture of this home prior to the two thousand and fourteen renovation in the back of the packet with a pink tab. During this renovation, they added a porch, which recent surveys indicate is one foot away from our property line. This caused them to encroach further on our property as they drove by this porch. Not knowing all the facts at the time, we felt we could live with that and knew from earlier interactions that going along to get along was our best shot at retaining a neighborly relationship, which we truly desired then and still do now. However, in two thousand and sixteen, we hired realtors to help us rent the property at Thirty Sunset. We noticed they were using that circular path that was partially on our property and partially on that of the Jewel, of the Jewel's, which went right by that porch, one, one foot from our property. Since a part of that path crossed into the Jewel's property, we did not want visitors trespassing on the Jewel's property. So, we put a piece of yellow tape at the entrance to the path going from the fourteen-foot right-of-way on two of our trees just to prevent passage until the property was rented, and informed the Jewel's of this. Even though we sincerely felt it was in their best interests and did not block act, their access to the property via the sixteen-foot right-of-way, they objected strenuously. We immediately received a letter from their lawyer threatening to take the entire triangle, about thirty percent of the property, by adverse possession. We had an easement drawn up immediately at our expense and went to their lawyer to offer this to the Jewel's at no charge. You need a driveway, we'll help you out. When we had no response from the lawyer, we knocked on the Jewel's door to try to work it out. They shut the door on us, filed a police. They shut the door on us, filed a police report, and sued us for harassment for standing on their porch. After many months through mediation, the Jewels agreed to pay for the easement we'd offered to give them to begin with. The Jewels' behavior became more intrusive when we were on our property. Mrs. Jewell often stood on the porch staring at us. And once she even shouted, "Go home" to me while I was standing on my property. When we temporarily parked a boat on our property, Mrs. Jewell came running out shouting, "You're not going to leave that here, are you?" We agonized over what we could do to regain the use of this now remaining 15 percent of our property for ourselves and the residents of 30 Sunset, because of course, the other 15 percent was the driveway easement they now had. We determined sadly that a six-foot privacy fence was the only way to do so. We visited Building Commissioner Rhodes to understand exactly what Lunenburg zoning would allow and proceeded to plan the privacy fence accordingly. We hired a fence company to complete the work. Their schedule caused the installation to precede the final grading. Since the October installation of the privacy fence, we have experienced the ability to walk on our property in peace. The simple act of raking leaves was now a joy, if you can believe that. We bear no ill will toward the Jewels. However, their behavior has caused us to feel that this privacy fence is the only way to allow us and the residents of 30 Sunset Lane to enjoy our property in peace. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and thank you for volunteering your time and effort on behalf of the town. We know full well how much work that is.
Carl Luck, 50 Sunset Lane. And I'd like to apologize right up front for keeping you out even later in the evening. I know, I know how difficult it is and what a burden it is to stay at these hearings till 10:00 or even 11:00 o'clock at night, as conservation quite often does. And I hope you don't have to tonight. However, this is an extremely important issue, not just, not just for us. The, the Building Commissioner has, has made a, a decision based on longstanding practice by building commissioners for decades. And the implications of overriding this decision...
You can't hear? Can you speak up? They're saying they can't hear.
It's not the microphone. It's just, the microphone doesn't project to the audience.
Oh, in here they can't hear.
It's for the TV.
Sorry.
So if you could just speak a little louder, please.
I will. Phyllis always tells me that, and I'm sure she's probably making signals back there. Anyway, the, the, this fence is, is probably the smallest issue that's before this board regarding upholding the commissioner's decision. As you'll see as I go through, and again, I apologize, but there's a lot of very important information, things going on around town that will be impacted. The impression that was tried to give to you that, you know, that there won't be any ramifications because there's no other such situations couldn't be farther from the truth. And, and this package, and I will walk you through the package if you, if you could stay on that. But there are a couple of things from the last meeting, though, that I would like to address before we get into the package. There's really, this really comes down to two, to two issues here that relate to the same issues, only maybe from a different angle. One is our, our streets, our, our right-of-ways, or common driveways even, as the building inspector terms them, which is a very appropriate term for this, are, are they streets to be dealt with in this context? And the, the other key thing which drives the, the comment that it can't be more than 36 inches is the requirement under the fence provision that if it's with, if the, if the fence obstructs vision, then it goes to 36 inches. And that's the, that's the 36 inches comes from. So very key is what does obstructs vision mean? And that, and we'll go through that. And there are multiple examples around town, what obstruction, obstruction vision means and what it doesn't mean. First, a couple of things from the last meeting, and I won't go, there were many, many things that the, the Jewels attorney said that, but I'm not going to pick on every one of them because they're not all important. But one of the ones I would like to clarify is...
He can't hear.
There was a comment on the...
If you, even if you turn yourself sideways...
If you want, you can come closer, too.
Even if you turn yourself sideways so you're halfway facing the audience...
Oh.
You're better off.
I am, so...
Don't worry about the mic. In other words, don't worry about the microphone.
It's directional that way. Great. Okay. There was a comment about the drain, and it was stated by the attorney that the drain had been there for years. That's simply not accurate. The drain was placed, was put in in August, and we did that as part of that settlement agreement, as a partial solution for the water, stormwater conditions we had. Those aren't done, and as part of this activity and the, the grading that hasn't been done is the last part of that stormwater that we committed to do. The other thing that was commented was that the, the Jewels and Luck property is at the same level, and that meaning the, the easement area and the area that wasn't affected by the driveway, and that couldn't be farther from the truth. Anyone who visited the site knows that there's now an 18-inch step between those two sites. If 18 inches is considered, you know, insignificant, then, then so be it, then I don't know why we're arguing over a few inches of fence. There are some other things I'd like to comment on from the meeting that were questions from the board and/or the building inspector. The question about the fence face, I don't think it's ugly.
Is the projector on? I can shut it off. You know what I'm doing? You know what I'm doing? It was his error, not yours, so don't worry about it.
Anyway, the...
Just give it a second.
Yeah, just give it, give it a minute. No idea. I'll, I'll proceed, I'll play with that. The, the face of the fence, and it was pointed out that there is no regulation in Lunenburg that says which face the fence is on. However, the fence is faced that way, not because we wanted to put the ugly side, as it's been called, to the Jewels. We would be quite happy to put the other side towards us and would have preferred to because we knew that that was going to be one of, that we knew this fence was going to be a problem, which is why we did our homework before we put it up. The reason the fence faces the way it does is to avoid problems in the future because the only way that that fence can be installed is from the face of the fence. The fence goes up against the posts. So that fence can only be installed and can only be maintained, as in remove posts, change slats, whatever, from the face. And we know we are going to have trouble with our neighbor if we step onto the easement area. They've already accused us of mowing parts of that lawn. They've accused our fence installers, who had strict instructions, do not cross that boundary line, for stepping on their grass. So we could not put the fence in such a way that we could not install or maintain it. If there was a way to, to work something out with the Jewels, we would be happy to turn it around, quite frankly. I, I don't need that faced fence. Matter of fact, the, the inside of the fence usually is, is facing the property owners. So it doesn't even look like that's our fence this way. So that, that's why the fence is that way. This, there was nothing more than just trying to avoid future problems. Oh, great. I'll get it up there. I'm sorry for taking your time on this. I can see it, and you can see it. Maybe we should just go with that, because it's the same, it's the same exact thing that's in your package.
All right.
So Phyllis, maybe, unless, unless something else can happen here quick.
Exit out of PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Exit out of presentation, then get back on.
How do I do that?
I think if you grab the window and slide it to your right, it should put it over to that screen.
I've lost my pointer. I just, I just have the full view of the... Whoop, where is this thing going? Anything happen?
Pull it back in focus. Working.
It might happen.
Okay, 30 Sunset Lot, new driveway easement.
Yep. Sorry. Thank you for bearing with me. Anyway, I'd be happy to turn the fence around. I just need to be able to maintain it. But the most important thing before I go into this, that the Building Commissioner made some very good comments last time. One of the ones that I think was most significant relative to this discussion, and, you know, seemed to, seemed to accurately, this was his comment, that the rights-of-way, 14, 16-foot, looked more like common driveways when he was asked a question here, that he would classify them as common driveway, which fits. It, you know, serves one or two places. So it was so interesting that I went up into the zoning code and looked for the definition of common driveway. And the definition of the common driveway is any drive, right-of-way, or private way, all of the things we're calling these things, which provides access to two lots, but which does not qualify as a street. So this, is it, so as the, as the building inspector said, and, and you guys read regulations, I've read too many regulations, they're never completely consistent within themselves. They evolve, and there's a statement here, there's another statement there that contradicts. So we have a statement in one side, as the, as the council appropriately walks through, it's technically correct, literally correct, that says these things are streets. And yet, over in another section, we have a section that says, "A common driveway is a driveway, a right-of-way, or a private way which provides access to two lots, which does not qualify as a street." So it's not clear. And that's, I, I don't, I don't know that either one you take to the bank. That's why we have building commissioners. Their job description is to interpret the regulations. If the regulations stood on their own, it would be a much simpler job, I'm sure. But that's exactly what he's doing. That's exactly what Gary Rhodes did when we went into the office, well in advance of this fence, and asked him, and took the plan in with the rights-of-ways and things and pointed them out. And, and he, and there was a question of whether or not he came to the site. He never came to the site. He saw the plans, he saw the easement plan, he saw the rights-of-way, saw the same plans you've seen. He ran out of the office, made this copy, and handed it to us in that meeting. Lisa may even recognize this funny color highlighter that Gary probably used in many cases. And we took it away, and this became our, our guidance in terms of design. So that's, that's those, those comments for your consideration. I do have a couple of very specific questions. One for the, through yourself, Mr. Chair, for the agreed party. I just want to make it clear, I think it is clear, he's never mentioned that he's trying to call the driveway that the easement is on, the easement driveway, a street. And I, I just want to make that clear so that we, we've at least put one thing to bed that is not a street. Through you, Mr. Chair, could I get any confirmation of whether that is part of this claim that the driveway is a street or just the rights-of-way?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
Speak up.
There's a footnote in my petition that actually says if you want to make that argument, that it doesn't qualify, but I'm not pursuing that as our primary argument of the primary argument. That is not forthright of the property.
So I get, so I have the follow-up question then from the comment tonight, and it was a comment from the other night, because the comment was that just looking at the rights-of-ways, that the fence in its entirety should be 30 inches, 36 inches, and that the fence is only 20 feet from these rights-of-ways. And that's simply not true. The, the fence is, the, the land between the 16-foot right-of-way and the fence is over 50 feet. So it's, the fence is not completely within 20 feet of rights-of-ways and from the...
So this red line is the property that belongs to this 30 Sunset Lane. This is the house, the porch. It comes, as you can see, it comes within one foot, what they're calling the front of their house is one foot off the property line. The 16-foot right-of-way is here. For reference, this end of the 14...
I'm sorry. For reference...
You're going to speak up.
Yeah, well, yeah, I get it. For reference, the, the 14-foot right-of-way, which is on this end here, is 67 feet. So that fence is not entirely within 20, entirely that fence is not within 20 feet, just to make that clear. I think that issue is a moot issue, quite frankly, as we continue the discussion. But I wanted to just clarify that. So let's, I, I won't go through, I won't go through the other, the other clarifications because they'll all come up in, in this discussion. Talk this way, and I, I hate to not speak to you, but... And I will get organized here in a minute.
Take your time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first, so what I, what I want to do is just step through the four claims in the appeal. And the first claim deals with this issue of streets being rights-of-ways. I think of, the Building Commissioner clearly has taken a position on that. The zoning, the code, as I pointed out, is conflicting. In one place, it says these streets, these are not to be considered rights-of-ways. Okay. So what we have, what I've tried to do is give you some hard examples without going all around town. And any, all of this is, everything I'm going to show you is examples within two miles of this location. I didn't have to go out beyond that two miles to find every example that I'm going to show One of the, the biggest concerns that I have and why I'm saying that the fence is not the biggest issue that you're ruling on here is that if you rule on this here, this, then from here forward, is all of rights-of-ways and all of the easements and all of common drives now have to meet our, if they're streets, there's a lot of implications in the regulations, not just fence. The fences, the fences are the smallest one. It's the setbacks. The setbacks are the biggest issue. And if you start applying setbacks to all of the rights-of-ways and common drives, that is going to be a huge issue going forward. And it's already an issue here, and I'll show you three, three examples. One of them sits very close to home. The porch that the Jewels installed a mere two years, three years ago, in 2014, 15, does not meet the setback requirement from that 14-foot right-of-way. It's only 30 feet from the right-of-way, from the center line, and the, the zoning requirement is 60. So I didn't have to go too far to find an example. And, and understand, I'm, my position with all these examples, with all these are, not that if you override, you know, that, that these places are all non-compliant. It are examples of what the decisions have been made on. So it's more looking at, not looking at the literal stepping through language, it's really looking at what's the practice been for the last 30 years? In this case, this house was built within the last two or three years. It's on, it's on Sunset Lane, but it, it's on the corner of Sunset Lane and a fire road. It's on Sunset Lane, but it's on the corner of Sunset Lane and a fire road. What you're looking at here is a fire road. This is Fire Road 24B. You're going to see this picture again when it comes to the obstructed view. But in this case, what I'm really looking at is the distance from the house from the fire road. And here's a plan for that house. The distance from the house to that fire road is 24 feet. If this had to meet the setback requirement for a street, that would have to be 60 feet. Here's another example that I'm not sure is completed construction. It's just constructed within this past year. This is Fire Road 12. You're very familiar with Fire Road 12 now, this evening. This house was just constructed. It's roughly 20 feet from the center line of that road, of Fire Road 12, not 60 feet, which would be required if streets are now defined as... Fire roads and rights-of-ways are defined as fire roads. So again, here, the biggest concern is, what's the implication going forward? Never mind going back, because nobody's going to ask anybody to, you know, move the house. But there's a lot of decisions going forward. And there's a lot of people out on these fire roads that are going to want to put a garage, an addition, or whatever. And a lot of these lots are 100 feet, and some are 100 feet deep. How in the heck are you going to meet these things? Now, there's a waiver process, and I'm sure they can come here, maybe get waivers. Doesn't seem like the right way to go, and it's not the way that's been handled for the last, at least, 30 years. Three building inspectors have made these decisions. And this is just the drawing to confirm that it is 20 feet off. And here's another example, again, on Fire Road 12. I didn't have a drawing of this, but you can tell that where the fire road is and where that building is. And it isn't going to meet 60 feet. The second part of the claim one is based on obstructed vision. And this is probably the most important part of this discussion tonight relative to the fence specifically. Because the only thing that's driving this request or demand that this fence be reduced to 36 inches is obstructed vision. And you have the regulations. That's where it comes in. If the vision... If the... If there's obstructed vision, the fence can't be above 36 inches. That's the paragraph that's being used here. Here's that same fence. And my dead... Oh. There's probably 100 feet of fence that's six feet off the fire road. It's six feet tall. It was built... This house is only a couple, three years max old, so it was recently built. Around another part of Lake... Now, these aren't fire roads, but that requirement is for streets. So these fences are on streets. They're sick... Everything I show you is going to be less than 20 feet from the road. A fence 20 feet from the road. The point is, as you'll see, none of them are obstructing vision. We've talked to both the building commissioner and the chairman of the planning board, and asked them, what is... When you say obstructing vision, what does that mean? Obstructing vision of what? From where? And both of them, independently, have said what the practice is. It's the vision of the road from the road. It has nothing to do with entrances on and off the road. So you can only have an obstructed vision by a fence if the road is curved. If the road is straight, which all these examples you'll see are, the fence can't obstruct the vision of the road. What that paragraph is concerned about is seeing traffic coming, going, stopped in front of you. An example where it ran amok was near Keating's. The... I don't know what they make there. They make prefab things along that road. And you'll see that fence, and that was a big deal. And you probably were aware of it and even got involved in it. That the vision was obstructed, and that fence had to be moved 20 feet from the road because it's curved. Every one of these examples that you will see... There's three different examples here. Two on Reservoir Road, one on Pearl. Every one of these have fences that are either at or parallel to the road. They're not obstructing vision because they're not obstructing vision of the road. You can drive down the road. There is no problem. They also confirm that it's not the vision coming in or out of a driveway. That's a completely different can of worms. There's nothing in the regulations that talk about that. It is not this paragraph that the Jules are trying to say applies to this fence, which A is nowhere is near the road. The road is straight. The fence does not obstruct any vision of the road at all. So doesn't fit that 36-inch requirement. They're not always fences, but the regulation talks also about any obstructions. There is a driveway right next to that mailbox, but this does not... But those do not obstruct vision of the road, looking at the road. Same thing. It looks like the same picture, but this is actually a little bit further down the road. These fences are parallel to the road, very close to the road. All of these structures are very close to the road. None of them obstruct vision according to the practices of the last 30 years. Again, this... There's no problem here. It doesn't obstruct vision. It's straight. I can see the road perfectly. There's a driveway right there, and this is the same place. And so you can see where the driveway is. That's not an issue. There is no... There are no requirements in the regulations that talk about the driveway or visibility or obstructed vision from the driveway. There are other things that deal with that issue. If I could pause, is there any questions about this vision? Because this obstructed vision is so key to this entire appeal that if the board has any questions, or of myself or the building commissioner, who I've had this discussion with, maybe a good time to do it.
Yeah, we'll be calling the building commissioner up. In fact, one of the things, Lisa, is the last time he came up, he had handed us a letter that he... Before, you know... We really didn't go through it, or I didn't even read it till after that we had, you know, moved on. So what I'd like to do is just read that into the record, if you would.
Absolutely. Members of the DPA, ZBA, as a zoning officer, I'm charged with interpreting the zoning bylaw as written. This is often a difficult task, as is the case with this fence situation. I say this because oftentimes, sections of the bylaw contradict each other. This is one reason why zoning bylaws are constantly changing and/or amended. For example, Section 250 6.601 requires fence within 12 horizontal feet of a dwelling unit or within 20 feet of a street line to be reduced in height to three feet. It further goes on to require three-foot-high screening for certain instances. However, Section 250 6.4C4 requires newly-installed driveways such as the Jules, with a budding parking to be screened with a five-foot fence, or plantings which will reach a height of six feet within three years of time. The luck's intend to park along this fence, which section is to be enforced. For situations like these, I feel reasonable logic needs to be used. It's reasonable to conclude fire roads, easements, and driveways were never treated as streets, which can be shown by lack of DPW involvement on these fire roads, easements, and driveways. Also, the previous building commissioner viewing this topic in the same way per telephone conversation with him on 12/10/19. In addition, multiple similar fences are in existence on these very same fire roads, easements, and driveways, only further reinforcing this logic. I think looking at fire roads, easements, and driveways as streets would bring forth dozens and dozens of similar violations on these small lakefront properties, which are undersized and non-conforming to current zoning bylaw dimensional regulations. These lots were not created with current standards in mind. How are normal-height fences to be over 20 feet away from the street, when many of the houses themselves are not? Can no normal-height fences and no privacy be obtained on these fire roads? Regarding the height of the fence, pictures taken clearly show a large depression alongside the recently-installed driveway due to the unpermitted driveway elevation being changed. This low area is being proposed to be built up to avoid ponding and other issues. The picture with the builder's level clearly shows this is a reasonable solution. Therefore, I find it reasonable for the fence to be installed in such a manner that prevents future rotting issues as well as with final grading performed, being within six feet, being within the six-feet height allowance. Please keep in mind... Please keep something in mind. Being in the construction business for many years and also being a building commissioner-inspector for the last five, I've learned fences commonly come in six-foot-tall sections. It is reasonable to assume they will be installed in such a manner so they do not rot out at the bottom, and so that small animals do not get trapped on one side. Standard practice to achieve this is to keep the fence a few inches off the ground. The International Building Code recognized this and changed fences not require a building permit from six to seven feet in height. So although the zoning bylaw may say six feet max in height, it is reasonable to assume it may be 6.2 or 6.3 feet when installed, unless fence manufacturers stop producing 5-foot-nine-high fence sections. Excuse me. In conclusion, you may have noticed I use the word "reasonable" many times in this letter. The reason for this is zoning bylaws are not black and white. There are many gray areas open to interpretation. I try to use reasonable logic to decipher the general purpose of the zoning bylaw sections as a whole and apply accordingly. Sincerely, KZ Burlingame, Building Commissioner, Zoning Officer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the break, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Building Commissioner.
Okay. The height, I hope, is not, you know... Whether it's six feet or seven feet. Six feet is what this height, this fence was designed to be. The bottom of the fence was intentionally, and you can tell from all of the photos, and I don't think anyone disagrees that the bottom of the fence is level or below level with the grade that was created by the new driveway. We had planned to, as Phyllis had said, unfortunately scheduled, we had to invert what would normally be done of do the grading first and then the fence. Schedule that couldn't happen. We did have the grading scheduled, and it was scheduled to be installed on November 4th, or the week of November 4th. The Monday of that week, we had our first meeting with our council relative to the Superior lawsuit that's been brought against us over this fence. And our council recommended that we do not do any more work on that site so that we did not aggravate the case and bring any other claims against us. So we put that on hold. We would be delighted if this board would say, "Not acceptable. You've got to bring the fence within compliance as soon as the snow falls." I'd be happy to turn that contractor back on and make this fence be no higher than six feet and maybe a couple inches. Just as a side note, Conservation Commission, and we've had several fences come before us, Conservation Commission requires a three-inch clearance for animals. The State Wetland Protection Act actually requires six inches. So we're going to stay closer to the two. I think they can go around the fence, maybe, but the building commissioner's comments are absolutely spot-on. This is just here to show you how flat this was to begin with. And if you've been down there now, you know that there's steps. So anything that went from flat, we didn't do any filling yet, was created by elevating the driveway. This is the picture that the building commissioner refers to. One of the comments that was made by the Jules lawyer last week was that the... Well, you can't count the top of the curb. You know, you've got to be level with the driveway. In fact, this is level. This is roughly where the picture was taken of the seven feet. This is the bottom of the fence level. The bottom of that level is at the bottom of the fence. We are... This fence, the bottom of that fence, is roughly about the driveway. It's about five feet, five inches below the grass grade, which means it's about level with the driveway. So it's what they said it should be. And just from prior decisions, this is a fence that's one mile down the road on Sunset Lane that was installed in 2011. So the 10-hour, the 10-year is still clicking on this one. This is on our family's property. My father built this cottage in '57. The family still owns this property. In 2011, the neighbor put this fence in. And we'll try to save time. We'll address both issues here. The height of this fence? Yep. So A, the backside is towards us. B, the neighbor, over the years, has filled his land about a foot and a half due to putting septic in, whatever. But he brought his level up. This is the original level back in the '50s, and we've never changed the grade here. He put his six-foot fence on top of his grade. So it's six feet on his side. It's seven feet, 10 inches on our side. It also, again, to kill two birds with one stone, this is a view from the lake. The cottage is this white building here. It's not the brown building. This is the family cottage that you can only see the roof of. It has severely interrupted the view shed. We went to Mike Savigny and said, "Is this right? Can they really do this?" And he went through the things. He said, "Yep, nope. There is no... Nothing that governs view, your view. Sorry about it, but there's nothing that governs it." And it's six feet on his side. And we said, "Damn." And we went away. Never occurred to us to come appeal it, but I don't know. Maybe we rethink that. So again, this is past practice. This isn't words or anything else. This is applying regulations. So regarding the six-foot height, and I hope in your minds this isn't an issue, and I apologize for taking your time on it, really do believe it's unreasonable to, you know, expect that all the zoning requirements be met prior to the completion of the project. I mean, you don't go in the middle of a project, see if the zoning requirements are met, and then shut it down. You wait till the project's completed, and then you do it. And that's all we're asking. We've made commitments in writing to the building commissioner. This fence will be brought within six feet of the grade. We're actually considering now, and we're talking to our engineer, this is the change of grades. This is the inches of the new grade of the driveway to the prior grade. So this is how much the elevation has been across that fence from one end to the 16-foot end down to the other end. These three are very close together, so it's not linear. This is the distance from the bottom of the fence. You can see the bottom of the fence here is not at the 18 and 1/2. It's down at 14. So it's about five feet below the new grade, five inches below the new grade. And this is the amount of fill that is currently being planned. We're looking at if we can deal with the... If it's compatible with the stormwater, because there is... There still is ponding. There still is puddling now, and it's slightly different reasons than before the driveway. I'm not blaming the driveway. I think the driveway actually helped. The storm drain helped. Our storm drain helped. There's still an issue of cleanup, that we need to get that graded so that the water will flow into the drain. will flow into the drain because now it won't. We think we can still do that by only having six inches on that end. We don't really need six, you know, a full, you know, six feet from our side over there. So we think we could probably lower that, maybe six inches when we do the grade. So it won't be quite so high. You know, we're not trying to make things worse. We're trying to get the job done as best we can, but with as little inconvenience as That's just where those three points were. So that end, we think we can probably bring down six inches or so without compromising the storm drain design. Safety, very important. Independent of zoning, it's extremely important. And I agree, and we certainly don't want to create anything that would, would create a safety hazard. That's why we, I don't have a picture here, but that's why that six, the, at the sixteen-foot end, actually during the construction when I was there, there was a plan to put a sloping section at the end, like on the fourteen-foot end. When we got down to there, I said, you know, there's no need for a fence beyond here for our privacy. This is a privacy fence. We, there's no need to have this continue beyond that point, so let's stop. Leave the last section off. The statement was made earlier tonight that the fence is only three feet from the sixteen-foot right-of-way. I don't know where that comes from. It's, it's seven feet from their, it's seven feet from the curb of the Jewels driveway at the sixteen-foot right-of-way. And it could be checked and measured and it's not, it's pretty easy to tell the difference between three and six, three and seven. Okay, so safety. And if you've been there, I'm, I'm wasting your time because there is no safety issue entering this, you know, exiting this driveway. This is a, a picture of that six, this is the sixteen-foot. This is the fence. Here's, here's the driveway out here. That's, that's a little more than three feet, I would say. The whole front of this car is sticking out and it's halfway to the, it's halfway to the sixteen-foot. So it's certainly not three feet. We took these pictures, I said, "Okay, somebody exit, I want to see what it is." So I backed into here, apologized, backed in, see what's the view. I didn't realize it at the time. I had actually backed a little further than I expected. I wanted to back to the edge of the thing, but I'm back probably three or four feet from the sixteen-foot here. This picture was taken from forty-five feet back. And you can, so you can easily see forty-five feet down the sixteen-foot in this direction. So exiting onto that is not a problem. There was a comment made in one of the letters that drivers can't see, you know, they don't know there's a car coming. Well, legally, you're supposed to stop before you enter a drive, enter a road. So if you're stopped at the end of this, there's no way that someone as far as forty-five, fifty feet can't see that there's a car coming out and they can't see the car. So there is no safety issue on this end due to the fence. And here's the, here's the fourteen. It's a little worse. The fence comes down there, but it does slope down. It, it does come down in height considerably. And this is the view from, where's five? Five feet, ten feet and fifteen feet. Now, it's important to note that this right-of-way, this corner of the right-of-way, why this thing's working, right here, is only thirty, I think thirty-two feet from the right-angle turn from the sixteen. So if you're coming down the sixteen, you make a right-angle turn, thirty-two feet down is this driveway. So you're, when you finish the turn in a normal car, you're halfway there already. You're not going more than five miles an hour. You are going very slow. And so you get this view. And that, and that's the view that's important, that's most important, is the view of the person on the road, of the person coming onto the road. Because the person coming onto the road should be stopped. They shouldn't be just driving out into a road. So I'm driving down this road. I want to know that I can see a car. And you can see a car from as much as fifteen feet down here, which is about as, when you're finished making your turn onto that, onto that road. I would like, I'm sorry, I would like to, one of the comments that was made, it was made tonight, I forget who made it tonight, but it was in a letter that was sent in from the Planetzers, the, the Jewels son and daughter-in-law sent the letter in, concerned about the And if I could, I read from the letter, just the sentence of, says, "As, as we leave our home towards Sunset Lane, the end of the fence nearest the sixteen-foot right-of-way obstructs our view of anyone coming out of the Jewels driveway, usually backing out." We'll, we'll get into the fact that this driveway was never, was never applied for, reviewed or permitted, which means it never went through any process of is it properly designed? And in fact, if you have to back out of the driveway, it violates the zoning code. Zoning code under driveway specifically says, "No driveway shall require that vehicles back out onto a public or private way." So if this driveway is designed that you have to back out, which is often done according to their son, then there's a problem with the driveway design regarding safety, not with my fence. In conclusion, there's no real safety issue that this fence creates. I wouldn't say that there's no safety issues. If, if there's concern, then, then different practices by the uses of the driveway, the, the beauty of this driveway, which to our chagrin, because it takes up a lot more room of our, a lot more of our land, is that it is a circular driveway. You can go in one end and out the other. You could go, your traffic patent could go in the fourteen when you're driving and go in the fourteen, enter that way and exit the, exit the sixteen. I think right now, the, the way the driveway is configured and designed, you can't turn around in the driveway. So when one car comes in, and normally they come in the sixteen, park in front of the porch, and then the next car comes in, parks back behind, the only way that second car can get out without moving the first car is to back out into the driveway. There is no, any good design that's required by, by codes requires you to be able to turn around. They always have a little turnaround so you can turn around. If they simply went one way, that, that other car, there is a space that that other car can pass, they can pass. You can pass, but you can't turn around. So you could, if it was a one-way driveway, you could remove all of the safety concerns. There'd be no need for backing out anywhere and you could pass and either car could go And I won't go into the pre-existing fence. I mean, there has been a, a more questionable safety issue for over forty years there due to the, this is the pre-existing fence. There's a fence that is right on the right-of-way, the sixteen and the fourteen-foot right-of-way, right angle right here. There's a sixteen, here's the fourteen-foot and the sixteen-foot. And it is right there. There is no way to see around that corner. But that's never been a complaint, never been an issue, never been raised as a concern, never, "Hey, can you modify your fence because, you know, we're concerned about safety." We maintain that there's no, there are no new issues that this fence creates that degrade the property value of our butter. If that property is, has a value issue, it's more related to the fact that they built the house three feet off the property line and now added a porch that is one foot off the property line. And it's the front of their house. I think that has a bigger impact to property value than a fence that's over fifteen feet away from the front of their house. Which is, was another statement that was made that the, in the, in the appeal, that the fence is a few feet from the porch. The fence is twenty feet away from the porch. Twenty feet. Building, the requirement, the zoning requirement is twelve if it's six feet. If it's less than twelve, it has to be less than six feet. But if it's twelve feet or greater, six feet is, is the requirement. And we meet, meet that very comfortably. There's no, I, I don't know how you, how you evaluate value. Nothing's been provided that substantiates any value reduction due to this. I, you know, it's, it's a very debatable point. I could, I could debate that, that it adds value. It provides them privacy. It provides that home, the front of their house, privacy. Otherwise, our property is right there, looking right in their front window. It also gives the, gives the illusion, quite frankly, that the twenty Sunset is more property than it has. Because if you look at that and you go curb value and you look at it, you'll assume that the, that they, that the property extends to the fence. Well, it doesn't. It's still our property. We, we've given easement to pass and to get access to twenties, to Sunset Lane, but it's And this just, and you have this, you can go through it. I won't take your time with that. And then the last claim, claim for addresses view, which again is not in, not mentioned anywhere in the zoning view. The way it is addressed in the zoning, I believe, and that's, and I believe that's why the requirement to be twelve feet away from a habitable space, a habitable residence, whatever the word is. I don't have it here. So that, that, as far as I can tell, is the only thing that I can find that addresses view, affecting somebody else's view. This fence, again, is over twenty feet away from the residence, the habitable residence. And again, this is a privacy fence. This is a fence that we put up because we wanted to regain control and the use of our property without any encumbrances from our neighbors or people yelling at us. It's pretty contradictory to try to have a privacy fence that doesn't somewhat block a view. That's the whole point. And I think, I hope in your, in your deliberations and your vote, you, you consider our rights to privacy. And without this fence, and without this fence being six feet, a three-foot fence provides no privacy. It, it's useless. The whole purpose of this fence is to gain privacy, to regain use, unencumbered use of And I'll just leave with this. This is, I went through great measures trying to figure out, how am I going to tell where the top of this fence is relative to their windows without going over on the porch and shooting a laser across? So I went out and I figured out how to shoot a, not to shoot, how to determine where the top of the fence is relative to the windows, and that's what this is. So this fuzziness is, is the level of the top of the fence and that's the top of the fence. So the, the windows are actually above the fence. There've been some photographs provided that are, that were taken from the porch and from the living room. And if you look at those two photographs, you see the, taking great care to try to make it look as bad as it can. If you stand at the, in the window, stand in it, not sit. If you sit, you can't even see the fence, nevermind, you know, you, you have no view. Stand, and you take a, a, a picture and you're up here and you shoot down, which is what that photo is, because you can tell what it is because you look at the two pictures. There's a lot of sky and you see the hill behind, which is nice, and it's a nice, it's conservation land. And you can see the, the hill behind, but in the second photograph, you can't see sky or hill or anything else because it's pointed down at the ground. So from that, from that window, and I don't know if anyone has had the opportunity to, maybe the Jewels have invited someone in to, to see how bad the view is. But again, this fence is almost twice as far away from the house as it has to be to be six feet. It's such that the top of the fence is the bottom of the window. So I don't believe there, about the only thing that's completely blocked from view that wasn't before is our property that we're trying to gain privacy on. So enough of that. I'm, I'm, I'm there. So again, rights of ways are common driveways and the, and the code is conflicting. In one place it says, "They can't be considered as streets." In the other place, you walk through the step-by-step and they're streets. It's why we have a building commissioner and a good building commissioner, and why the last three building commissioners have clearly had the same interpretation of the regulations. There is no obstructed vision as practice implies, which is the vision of the road from the road. Nothing to do with entrances and exits. And I say, there's thirteen examples within two miles of our house that demonstrate that And that also demonstrate that the coming out of the driveway has not come in play. In all of those cases, they were more obstructed than we are here. This fence is back far enough so that you can, you can get out and you can safely enter. Again, if, if, if the ZBA, you know, overrules the decision, you're basically overruling our right to privacy on our property. The current and best, and the, and the past commissioners have, have done their job and they've done a good job of interpreting the, the building and zoning laws. You know, just please consider all these facts and the professional's opinion and, and don't create, which will be problems going forward if, if this, if this appeal stands in future applications and perhaps existing conditions. Thank you very much for your time. I greatly appreciate it.
Welcome. Hold on one minute. While you're there, I, I've got a couple of questions and I'm sure so have the other members. One of the, one of the things I know the attorney the last time mentioned that you were responsible, I'm sorry, can't hear? One of the things that the attorney mentioned last time, and I believe, when I was down there, I, I actually went there twice. I went there one day when it was pouring out and there was quite a bit of water and around the shore it didn't seem to be draining in. I believe that the attorney mentioned that. I had asked about who put the shore and, and at that time, I don't think that you knew. But my, my question is, I think he mentioned that the locks were responsible for the water. Is that correct?
The, the, in the settlement agreement for the, for the last event where we provided the easement, we took responsibility. That, that, that area where the thirteen, where the fourteen and the sixteen-foot intersect would pool up to the point that the entire roadways would be, would be covered with water. We had a lot of water coming down the sixteen-foot, I mean, that whole side of the hill drains down there, used to drain down there. And that whole area would flood. We took responsibility for correcting the flooding and that's, storm drain was, was one step of it and we put that in in August. As you saw, even with a storm drain there, the water now doesn't all get to the storm drain. There's water coming off the driveway on the fourteen-foot entrance. The driveway does a good job of capturing a lot of water in that catch basin and I, and I applaud them and the designer for doing that. But, but there's a crest there and, and everything from one side still comes down and, and that's okay. We've got the storm drain there and, and I have no problem with that. However, in order to get the water into the storm drain, I need to do the grading because now the grade is not consistent with getting it into the storm drain. So we need to bring the, bring the grade, slope the grade and get the water in. And that's what the grading's all about, is to solve that problem. And that's what the grading's all about, is to solve that problem.
Okay. And the other thing, like I said, I went down twice. After the last hearing, I went down again because I, I thought maybe I missed some things while I was there. And I will say that I did take a level with me, and I did stick it under the fence, under the bottom. Coast, I think, to the picture you just showed, and I will agree that it, because I believe that the attorney, you mentioned that the grades were the same, other than the, the berm or whatever you would call that.
The other, the other area is unique in that it's down further than the rest of the property does. The doorway does curve up in every way that it, at that one point, generally speaking, more level than I think.
I'll, I'll let you come back up in a moment, okay? I'll let you answer all the questions in a moment, just so we can keep order. The, the other thing, I'll agree with you, while I was there, I also did measure how far the, the fence it was back from the edge of the road, and it, I agree it was seven feet, just because you had mentioned that.
Yes, yes.
I, I gladly let you speak again. I'm wrong. I'm going to open it up to the board to question him while he's here first. So I, at that, I will open it up to the rest of the board if they have any questions. And Mr. Lock while he's at the podium.
Originally, I wondered why you couldn't put a tapered or a three or four-foot piece on this end? And I think you already answered that question. That it's further enough back, it's like seven feet or something in from...
Exactly, yeah. There was one more section that we actually contracted. And when we got to this point, I said, there's, there's no, there's no need for it. It's not going to, it's not going, again, we're not trying to upset people, we're not trying to ruin their lives. We're trying to regain privacy. And we got there, and I said, look, I don't need privacy over here, so leave the last section off. It'll help the view, it'll be better for everybody. We don't need it for privacy. So, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So you had mentioned that the, and I understand the reasoning why the fence was put, which side of the fence was put on, which, which way? Was there any consideration, and you mentioned it was mainly because of maintenance. Was there any consideration to a no-maintenance fence? Something that might have been like, say, a vinyl or something like that, that would not cause that issue?
I, I hate to, I hate to disagree with somebody who's going to vote on something very important to me, but I don't believe there is a no-maintenance fence. We've had plastic fences. I'm very concerned because the way the driveway is put in, and the plowing that is, that is done by the, the owner and their, and their son, pretty sure there's going to be damage to this fence sooner or later, and I, and I accept that. And a plastic fence damages and breaks pretty darn easy in the winter when you pile snow on it or hit it with a plow. So if there was a no-maintenance solution, I would absolutely, I would absolutely love it, and that's what I would have done. But there isn't. And, and the other, the other part of the thing was of the, that we went immediately to the stockade, is part of what we want to do here is regain that this is a property, you know? I mean, they even alluded to it, remember, oh, this is, oh, that triangle is disconnected. It's not even connected to your property. That's, I'm trying to get away from that. This is our property, and we want to enjoy the whole property and have the people who either live there or rent there, hopefully my daughter lived there, feel that this is our property. And when you drive down there, and I tell you, we, this has been painful for us, very painful, and as you heard from Phyllis. When we put the fence up, we agonized and agonized because we knew we were going to end up in court. We knew it. It's guaranteed. It got to the point where we said, you know, I, I, either we walk away from the property or we just do what we got to do and take the ramifications. And we decided to do it. Usually, usually we have a lot of buyer's remorse. The week following, the, the week between when we put the fence and when we got served the, the suit papers, there wasn't a moment of remorse. We just felt great. We look over there, that's our property. That's, our renters, even coming in, it's, it's better for them. They now feel that property. So part of, and the reason I go for that story, this fence matches the other fence. We wanted to reintegrate it. The rest of the fence that goes around that property is six-foot stockade fence. So this now looks like the same property. And it would look even more like it if the fence was the other way around, which I would, if somebody came up with a solution or gave me, you know, you know, assured me I wouldn't get sued for stepping on the other side to fix the fence, I'd flip the fence around tomorrow.
Other question is, is that my understanding is that you, in certain areas, you're going to be putting anywhere from nine to a foot of fill. The proposal is to have nine inches to a foot of fill. My understanding was with trees, they don't quite like that that much when you're doing that to the trunks. Is there a plan to, what is, what is the plan to do with the trees that are right next to the fence?
I was hoping I have a picture here. It's a really good point. To, to begin with, I, I, I'm hopeful we won't need 12 inches, as I said. I think that end where it, and it's right at the end, which is why I highlighted that end, that this, this huge step was created, and the whole, the whole 16-foot, the whole 16-foot right-of-way was, was, was raised during that highway construction. That, that wasn't where the 16-foot right-of-way was. This whole, like I showed you in that picture earlier, this whole place was flat. This whole place was flat. So anything you, anything you see was added. So the 16-foot, you know, it wasn't natural, you know, driveway joint, the 16-foot. The 16-foot was raised 18 inches as well. So the interesting thing, though, and I wish I had a picture, and maybe one of these shows it, in that area, the tree that's right there, between the tree and where the fence is now, the ground dips down. So I could actually put close to six inches of fill and only be at the normal base of the tree. So in, in no place is the fill going to affect the trees. The fill is only, they show up here, in general, is only four, four inches or so over most of the fence. On this end up here, if I went all the way up to the, if I didn't lower the fence, it would, it would be 12 inches. I think I can lower the fence six inches and make it only a six inch. And that tree is already, I don't know why, but that tree is already proud of the normal grade. Though it's a good question, but we've looked at that because I love trees.
In your, in, in your book here, you put it as, whatever it would be, it would be nine, at least nine, you know, nine inches in that area. So it would be...
In the last column?
Well, that's if you're lowering the fence.
Yeah, yes, if I lower the fence.
If you're lowering the fence, you're going to have seven inches there. So it's still significant.
Yep. And, and, you know, I mean, it makes no sense, as the building commissioner said, to have a, you know, to have a fence. What, what I'm worried about, even with this, what I'm, I'm, I'm worried about is if I don't come up to that grade, to the, to the grade that's been created, there will be a dip there between the fence and the curb. There's going to be a gully there. And there's, and I don't have no idea how the other side of that fence is going to be maintained, if it's going to be well raked. I know the fence that's existing on 30 Sunset now, they put it too low, and they didn't rake the leaves for many years, and the bottom of the fence is all rotted. So I'm not going to be comfortable going on the other side of that fence and making sure that the leaves are away. So I, I would love to do away with any dip so that it was flat, and it's not going to be a hole for leaves and debris to go into. I gave up on that hope.
So can I just ask you a question on, on, on the applicant side? So you're, you're saying that the reason you put the fence, the post, so on the flip side, you have an easement. Can you pass and repass on that, on that driveway that was raised 18 inches or no? Is that...
Isn't that, isn't that the definition of an easement?
It's exclusive to you? No, okay. So that answers the question.
Yeah, it doesn't actually answer the question correctly.
But you, you had that, you owned that piece of property, and then you...
It's an easement, an easement, uh... An easement isn't a physical thing. It's a right.
To pass and repass.
Right. And, and within the easement we granted, we granted not just the right to pass, repass, but also the right to pave. So they have all those rights. But that's, that's all they have right. And it's a, it's to pass and repass for the purposes of getting to Sunset Lane. So technically, and I really don't want to fight this in another, yet another suit, but I believe and been told that it doesn't restrict us from walking on the property. It's still our property. They have an exclusive easement, which is, which means we can't allow anyone else to pass or repass on that path.
Correct.
Right. So that's the case. It doesn't speak to the owner of the property.
Right. And I mean, that was the point of the, of the, you know, your reasoning about the fence being the way it was because of repairs. To, you know, to Hans's point, you are allowed to walk wherever you like.
I, I have all kinds of rights. So does my neighbor. They have the right to sue me for the stupidest things in the world and cost me tens of thousands of dollars, which has happened. So I'm a little gun-shy to make any of those assumptions of what I am willing, what risks I'm willing to take to walk on the other side. If I, if, if the aggrieved party said tonight, look, we have no problem with you accessing the other side of that fence for maintenance purposes or installation purposes or raking that little area? They said that tonight? Soon as I could get the contractor, I'd go turn the fence around.
But I will, I will point out that there is nothing...
No, I understand. I do understand, Mr. Chair. No, I know, no.
I was pointing out it is not...
I mean, I think we all, when we, I mean, when I went down there, the first thing I thought is, why is that fence on the other side? Because if you want to be a good neighbor, you want the ugly side towards you and the nice side towards the neighbor.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It's a neighborly thing to do.
I'd be happy to do it if I had a neighborly neighbor.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Did I hear you say that you are willing to lower the fence?
On that, on that, on that end?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, yes, yes, to, to have less fill. It'd still be a six-foot fence.
Right, no, I understand.
But it would, on, on that end, I, we would absolutely be...
I just, I'm sure I heard you say...
Yes, no, I, I did. And the only, the only caveat I said, which I, what I, I think is a very small risk, is it still needs to get the job done. I don't think I need 12 inches of fill down at that end to get the grade. I think six inches at that end would get the grade, and that would bring the fence down. I, Craig looks at your table, but I could probably commit to no more than whatever, six inches of fill anywhere, you know?
Okay. Any more questions? The Lock while he's there? Okay, thank you.
I don't want to do it.
I think maybe, I know that the building inspector's here as well. Did you want to say anything, Kay, Casey, before? And then I, I, we will go back to you, let you address whatever.
Casey Burlingame, Building Commissioner, town of Lunenburg. Yeah, I think, I think, you know, there was a good job done tonight showing both sides. I think the reality is, either side can be argued all night long. I think you guys just need to come up with whether or not you think it's allowed by the bylaw. But I think he brought up a good point that the words "which obstructs vision" is really the key here. Because if you drive down the road, a public road, and there's a fence along of it that's six feet high, there's nothing saying you can't have that in the bylaw right now. So to say that's, you know, that's the main argument that they have, I think, doesn't hold water. You know, they're hanging, they had on that, and the fact that it was created before the subdivision went into effect, which I get. If you look at it that way, you could call it a street, but even if you call it a street, it's still not obstructing vision, which, so... To me, it's a black and white case, to be honest with you, but...
Any questions at building inspector while he's here?
Just for a clarification, would, if it was a, if this was a fire road, would it be considered, in your mind, is, is it the same?
Same as...
You know, because a fire road is not really a...
I don't consider fire roads the same as public streets.
Okay. And so it would be the same as what we're going through today?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
If this was on a public street, it would be the same exact thing.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
I'll have one more question, too. Now, we're talking, say, say this is a street, and there was a question about the vision being blocked or whatever. The fence is already seven feet back on the property. You would really only have to change the end section to 36 inches, not the entire fence.
Right, I would agree that, is it the picture you saw, you could see most of the car before they even got to the 16-foot right-of-way? So worst case, I could see maybe making them clip that corner or getting rid of that end section and bringing it back a couple of feet. But I think to say the whole fence would need to be reduced to 36 inches is, isn't proper.
All right. Thank you. Any question, any other question?
No.
Is there any public comment?
We actually cut off public comment before, but I'm going to allow it. But I'm going to go back if you would like to.
Perry Jewell, 20 Sunset Lane, again. I actually am going to rely on Jeff again to answer most of the substantive issues. I just feel, you know, sort of obligated that I felt that there were a bunch of kind of disparaging remarks, kind of that were included and directed toward me that are really irrelevant to the current issue, but, you know, I think deserve a little bit of mention. One of those had to do, of course, with the fact that the improvements that we made to this home and the references to the porch. Even in that 2007 photo that he had shown from the old assessor's map, you could see the door was exactly where the door is. You could see that there was a, there was a cement slab that was still there from where the steps had been. And that porch had rotted out years ago. Those buildings were built in, you know, prior to 1947, quite frankly, and before the lot was subdivided. That's how they all ended up being as close as they were to that property line. Because the number 30 Sunset Lane was separated from the 20 and 22 at that time. And that's what created a lot of this problem with that triangle area. Because the triangle area had always been used by the number 20 as like a front yard. That's why the previous owner of number 30 built the fence around the part that he used and allowed my wife's father and mother to, to use the other area. Because that was the only access to their home. And so what we had at that stage was an adverse possession claim of over 50 years of using that when Carl bought it and started to try to block it. And he's the one that sued us. We didn't sue him. He sued us. We never sued him. It was a countersuit, I guess technically, but it was his suit that was finally arbitrated, and we ended up purchasing this exclusive easement for the driveway areas. Well, and then, and then we've, we've spent obviously another 50, probably between the paving and the rest of it. To, to your question, Mr. Chairman, with regard to two things, there, it is seven feet from like the curb to the edge of the fence. The curb is not the right-of-way. That's the difference. If you look at when I can, when I paved that, or when I, I laid out the plan to pave that with the powels, we intentionally moved it away from Carl's property line. There's a 16-foot right-of-way. And I'm just going to pass this one down.
Pass it to Lee, Mr. Joe.
But it is where, if you, if you go back out there today, you would have seen where Carl has some snow markers in there along on his edge. That's because he, when we plowed it, you know, he doesn't want us to get any snow on his land. So I allowed a space there so that when we plowed it, there's room for some snow to fall over on that side and not be on his property. But it's three, it's less than three feet to the 16-foot right-of-way. You're absolutely right, it's seven feet to the pavement, but it's less than three feet to the right-of-way. The reason he didn't put that in... The reason he didn't put that other post out there, in my opinion, is that it wasn't his property, and the fence people wouldn't do it. It was on the right-of-way, the town property, if you will. There, so, you know, all that work was fully permitted. It included many outside things as the porch, the roof, the windows, the new siding, many things besides, you know, just, you know, refurbishment of inside. And it was all signed off on by Mike. It was closed out. It was all done correctly. It's interesting, you know, that I've had a long relationship with kind of, through Don Bowen, with Mike and people. We used to go to the Friday breakfast at Don's house, you know, that Mike would cook. And his interested part in this thing off of Sunset Lane, you know, even though, you know, we're all involved in all the town stuff. I'm the current chairman of the Board of Health and have been there for years. But what I used to be involved in with Mike was these areas of, that he was working with, like the motorcycle shop, you know, and all those things that we got into. But in this particular case, his interest really was in that fourth item of why our properties deserved to be treated like any other properties. And that was this issue of the fact that we had Sunset Lane addresses. We were required to pay for Sunset Lane, even though we don't abut Sunset Lane. And that was true of number 30, and it was number 20 as well in those days. And that therefore we should be afforded the same rights as someone who lives on Sunset Lane. And that is to say that, you know, the Fire Road 27 was our access there and had been the original road that went all the way back to Flat Hill, that that should be treated as, as ours. Now, the, the thing that Carl had shown on all these other examples, as well as number 30 and these other fences, those were where people had obstructed themselves. Those fences were built by the people who were obstructed. This is different. This is where your neighbor is building a fence to obstruct you. That's the key difference here, as in the case of that one that, at number 30, that was built by the owner of number 30, and it obstructed him sure, as many of those other examples that he showed were the same way, and I think that's different. The other, I guess, only key thing, you asked about why it was wet and why it was so deep in that corner. If you look at one of these accessor's maps on this, you will see that coming down beside, in this area, coming down beside Fire Road 27 is blue wiggly stream. And that's coming because when Sunset Lane was originally built, there's no curb on that side of it up there. And so that water does run down off of that, down and then ran along. And it used to, before I built the curbs and before I repaved it and pitched it away, it used to come and cross over right there into this property of Carl's. It would come down the road, it would cross over, and that's erosion is what you're seeing there. That spot got eroded badly, and it was never filled. We just built, you know, we just built around it. But that's why I left this extra area for the snow plowing and to make sure that we got that water away from Carl's property, because I was being accused that it was all coming off of my property, and we knew that wasn't the case. In any event, there was a drain there where Carl has just recently put in the new drain. It, before that, he had dug a trench with his tractor. It was partly covered by plywood and a piece of metal and a, and a barbecue grate. And that was part of the settlement, too, was that he was to replace that with a proper drain. And in the process of doing that, of course, he also built up with gravel the part of the road I hadn't paved on both of those right-of-ways. And so that's partly what's, what's creating this bowl now that you're talking about, is that it's been built up around on all sides now, not just the two I paved. At any rate, I think the legal issues are best addressed, you know. By our attorney, who, by the way, was our attorney through the previous. Thanks as well. And also as person firsthand, all the details.
So, you know, one of the things that I had made sure not to do when I presented to the board was get into the history and the dispute between the parties, because I don't think it's relevant at all. I could go through now and, and contest a lot of what was stated here about the disputes, who started what, who's been the aggressor, et cetera. Not going to do it, because it doesn't concern you guys.
It's not relevant.
There's a few points that I do want to address. First of all, there is absolutely no discrepancy in the bylaw. The, the definition of common driveway that Mr. Luck pointed to, let's just focus on the very first part of that definition. Any drive, right-of-way, or private way which provides access to two lots. Doesn't say two or more lots, says two lots. Neither of these pri, neither of these rights-of-way provide access to two lots. Common driveway is a driveway that splits between two homes and serves both homes. That is not the case here. There's no, there's no discrepancy, okay? Because that does not apply to the current situation. Furthermore, the way that he read it said, "but which," the second sort of disjunctive part of the, of the provision said, "but which does not qualify as streets." That's actually not what the definition reads. But if we take his, if we take his version of that, we do have private ways that qualify as streets here under the clear language of the bylaw. So again, absolutely no discrepancy. So to, to point at the bylaws and say, "Oh, you know, we can't really understand what they're saying, so here's our interpretation of it, you need to pick that." It's, it's nonsense. The bylaws are very clear. There is no discrepancy according to the bylaws. Because these are within 20 feet of streets, because this fence is within 20 feet of streets, it must be reduced to no more than 36 inches, because it also obstructs vision. Now, let me get into the obstruct vision portion as well. Actually, before I get there, I want to get to the point that, that I believe, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned about abating only a portion of the fence. I would say, because each side of the fence touches, one side of the fence touches the 16-foot right-of, right-of-way essentially, the other side of the fence touches the 14-foot right-of-way. At least the first 20 feet of the fence needs, needs to be abated to 30, no higher than 36 inches. But if you do that, you're sitting with a parabola-shaped fence. I don't think that's the spirit or purpose of the bylaw. I think you need, I think the entire fence would need to be abated if it's abated, and it should be abated under the bylaws. With respect to obstruction of vision, Mr. Luck has fabricated this, this standard by which apparently obstruction of vision only means obstructing the road from the road. Points to nothing to support that, no letters from any professionals to support that, no witnesses here to present anything to the board to support that. It's very self-serving, and I would suggest the board completely disregard it. Even if you did consider that to be the definition, you have a 16-foot right-of-way and a 14-foot right-of-way that create an L. You have a fence that is U-shaped between them, so you actually do obstruct the vision of the 16-foot right-of-way from the 14-foot right-of-way and vice versa. So according to his fabricated definition, it would still obstruct vision, and this fence should still be abated because of the fact that it obstructs vision. Again, like, like Perry just said, all of the pictures of fences are pictures of fences that have been erected by the owner of the home. So of course, the owner of the home is not going to come complain to the building commissioner or the board about their own fence. This is a very unique situation, as I described last time. You have a homeowner who has a sliver of land between them and the oncoming road belonging to somebody else, that somebody else happens to be the Lux, and they've erected a fence that completely barricades their property. And there is a Massachusetts statute, commonly referred to as the spite fence statute. That's what this is. This is a spite fence. These are neighbors that don't get along. One of them has put a spite fence 15 feet away from their neighbor's house. And that is, again, not your problem. That is the subject of the lawsuit. But there is no question that that's the case. If Mr. Luck was truly concerned with accessing the fence in order to, to maintain it, pull it back two feet so he can walk on his own property on the front side. He wanted that fence to be as close to the neighbor's house, to the Jewell's house, as possible, and now he's, after the fact, creating a justification for that by saying, "Oh, it's so he can access the backside for maintenance purposes." No, pull the fence back, and then you can come, come wherever you need to go and, and maintain or repair the fence. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting a little passionate. I've just been involved in this for years, and hearing what I just heard makes me pretty aggravated. There's a couple of other things that I wanted to address as well. So a lot of the pictures, in addition to the fact that they're showing homeowners that erected their own fences, they're showing random roadways. Okay, maybe it's a fire road, maybe it's a private way. We don't know. What we, what we definitely don't know is whether it was in existence prior to the enactment of the subdivision control law. So to point to those and say, "Oh, there's definitely going to be a problem with this, definitely going to be a problem with that." No, there's only a problem if those roads have been in existence since before the enactment of the subdivision control law, and there's been no evidence submitted to that effect either. Additionally, you have to have someone complain about a fence in order for it to come to the building commissioner or for it to come to the board. So just simply to point at existing fences and say, "Here's a fence that looks kind of like the one I put up. No one's complained about it, so clearly, you know, it doesn't obstruct vision and it's, and it conforms with all the bylaws." Again, that is meaningless. That's nonsense. All that means is no one's complained about it. Doesn't mean it doesn't violate the bylaws, but the bylaws don't enforce themselves. The, it's not incumbent upon the town or the building commissioner to enforce the bylaws on your own or on his own. He enforces it when a complaint is raised to him, and you check those decisions when a complaint is raised to you. Simply pointing at fences and saying, "No complaint has been raised," is, is, again, nonsense, because that's all it proves, is that no complaint has been raised. It doesn't prove anything about the conformity of that fence with the bylaws. See if I had any other notes here. There was a mention of an additional section of the bylaws with respect to screening in of driveways and screening in of newly constructed driveways. And I believe the letter that was recently submitted, if I understand correctly, was submitted by the commissioner, the building commissioner, said something to the effect that because the Jewell's driveway is a newly installed driveway, it would have to be screened by some block, you know, by a barrier of approximately three feet in height. That, again, that doesn't apply because of, first of all, it's not a newly installed driveway. The driveway's been in existence since before 1947, so it's a 70-year-old driveway. It's only been newly paved or newly improved. That doesn't mean it needs to be all of a sudden brought into compliance with the zoning bylaws, however. And, again, that argument doesn't really apply, because what you're saying is, "Oh, we put up a seven-foot fence, or we put up a six-foot fence, and why should we be forced to take it down? Because even if we did, the Jewell's would have to go out, pick their own fence with, which they like. And if you look at that provision, the fence can be perforated up to 50 percent." So they could pick a vinyl fence that is, you know, slat opening, slat opening, which probably, which completely, you know, addresses the security issue at hand, or the safety issue, rather. So to say that, "Oh, you know, they're, they're still going to have to go put up their own three-to-five-foot barrier of their own choosing, so why not just let us keep our entirely opaque six-foot barrier?" Of course, fine, let's, let's let the Jewell's, let's take the fence down and let the Jewell's put up their own. I think they would much prefer to do that. I, you know, there's a lot of other points I'd like to address. If you look at some of the pictures that have been submitted in that packet, they're all taken at very favorable angles, saying that, you know, certain properties, you know, were obstructed, and then taking, taking a picture from, you know, an angle that makes the fence look like it obscures, when in fact, the, the main view of the property is of the lake, and it's still entirely open, and the fence is running along the side. It doesn't apply to this, to this case where the fence is directly in front of the main, you know, the front of the Jewell's home. The last thing I'll, thing I'll say in closing is, is again, I think a lot of what has been presented on the side opposing this petition is frankly intended to distract the board. I think the board should focus on the language of the bylaws, which is clear, which is not ambiguous, and according to that language, this fence both obstructs vision and is within 20 feet of the str, of two streets and should be abated to no higher than 36 inches. From the, the way that I read it, there is no other conclusion.
Any questions while he's standing?
Can I ask a que, it's just in a hypothetical.
Sure.
You know, to help resolve the issue. I understand both sides would, would, would it be amenable if the, the fence was reversed, and so your, your, your client was looking at the nicer end of the fence and no longer looking at the posts, A? B, to alleviate the safety issues, you know, scope it, you know, on both ends so that it's coming off in the six feet, and it's, it's, it's sloping down so that, you know, it's, it's a non-safety issue where you can come out on both sides? And, and C, bring the fence height down from whatever the seven feet is, close that gap and bring it right down to the ground? So you have, you know, would that be something amenable to your client?
My guess is no, simply because it would still obstruct vision from the view of their home and from their driveway when they're in their cars, despite the fact that that vision may improve slightly, you know, as they get closer to the, the parts of the scope down. I think, I think one of their primary concerns is the view from their, from their home, and that wouldn't, that really wouldn't improve that factor.
No, because you're still going to, it's still going to be high.
Exactly.
Okay.
You know, we actually, we actually did reach out to the Lux attorney to try and reach some sort of resolution. We haven't been able to do that yet. That's why we're, you know, still pursuing this. One other thing I did want to mention real quick that you reminded me of when you, when you asked that question, is that a lot of the, the pictures about safety that were presented, you know, standing 45 foot back, I think one picture was, Mr. Luck said he was 45 feet away from the entrance, with a picture, you know, of, of a car parked sort of visibly at the end of the driveway. Of course, that doesn't seem dangerous, because you're standing still 45 feet away from the end of the driveway. If two cars are moving at the same time, doesn't matter how, and they, and they meet each other right as that visibility is finally gained, that's a safety issue. That's a risk right there. So that is, you know, again, one of the reasons why the pictures that were presented are sort of misleading, and I would just urge the board to focus on obstruction of vision from a, from a common sense perspective, because there is no other way to interpret it under the, under the bylaws. Disregard the sort of fabricated definition that was presented here tonight by Mr. Luck, and under that definition, and the fact that this, you know, the driveway is within 20 feet of two streets, it has to be abated to 36 inches in its entirety.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, we received something on, that Lisa received something, and sent, and sent to us regarding the police commi, the police commissioners, I'm sorry, the chief of police's comments when it came to the idea of obstruction. Is it possible to, do you have that, a record with that, of that?
Not that I know of.
He didn't say anything.
No, I didn't.
I thought, I thought there was an email. There was an email that he.
We had reached out.
That was for the previous hearing.
To some other departments, and I don't know of any of him answering anything.
Oh, you said about safety.
Yes, exactly. That's, that's one of the things we talked.
That was the email. I didn't, I didn't.
Okay.
I could, you know, I can probably read it to you. Let me, let me read it.
Sorry. Just, I figured it was relevant. Let him, let him look it up.
While you're looking it up, I'm going to ask a few questions. I went back, just trying to figure this all out. And so I went back on the history of Lake Shirley, you know, where it started way back in 1852 to dammit, to, for mills and all of that. And going back, and, and a lot of that whole area with all these fire roads, the fire roads were nothing at, it appears till they came into the late 40s, 50s, where people, they started chopping up that land and a little poster-stamp lots, and they put in all these, they call them fire roads, to go to all these different little camps. And they were summer camps. They weren't anything for residents, you know, full-time that we have today. And I was really trying to figure out, you know, your argument for a street. And I looked up everything, right-of-ways, private ways, easements, fire roads, private ways, all the different things. And I really found an awful lot of gray area between the state's definitions, the town's definitions. I really did find an awful lot of gray area. So I'm just wondering, you know, and part of what you, what you had said is a, something about a, a right-of-way is a private way, so therefore it's a street.
So my, my progression is, these rights-of-way are rights-of-way under the bylaw. Because they're rights-of-way under the bylaw, they are private ways under the bylaw. Because they are private ways in existence prior to the town of Lunenburg's enactment of the subdivision control law, they are also streets under the bylaw. And because they are streets, they fall under the purview of 250, 6.6.
I'll ask you another thing, and I think I'm going, I know you're going to answer it, but there's other lakes and there's other roads in town. And I know that there's an area where at least three of the roads, right-of-ways, they wanted to have them, the town accept. They had to bring those up to code. They had to bring them up to the code of the current streets, and then they had to go to town meeting, and they had to get those approved. What, what is, what makes these streets, when they had to go through all of this, to get them as streets?
So I would assume what they actually did was get them designated as public ways, because that's the process to get, my understanding is that that's the process to get. Because that's the process to get, my understanding is that that's the process to get something designated as a public way. And a public way is different from a street. A street encompasses both public ways and private ways. And a street, from my understanding, in and of itself, doesn't, doesn't create any obligations on the town. It's sort of a catch-all for this public way and this private way determination. The public way is what forces the town to actually, you know, get the BPW and get, you know, the plows out and maintain the streets. Private way is more of a general term that applies in a lot of different situations, the bylaws. So I would guess that what they did is follow the procedure for getting a street, getting a private way determined to be a public way, and therefore the town would have to come in and plow. And that is what happened in the 1990s with respect to Sunset Lane, which is what, which is what the assessment has to do with in the package that is submitted with the original petition as well. There's an additional point I wanted to make. It may come back to me, but does that, does that address the question that you had?
Yeah, I think it does.
Yes, the town is technically precluded from appropriating funds to plow private ways. So if someone was, yeah, if someone was trying to get the town to be responsible, you know, let's say a development went in and all of a sudden you have 40 homes being served by a private way and they want, you know, that community wants that to be, wants that private way to be converted to a public way, then you'd have to go through that entire process. But there is no, there is no process by which to convert something to a street. I don't think a street is simply by virtue of the definitions that already exist within the, within the bylaws. And I remembered the point that I wanted to make. So you mentioned that there was gray area in looking between the sort of the state definitions and some of the other definitions. And I would just suggest the only definitions that the board should be concerned with respectfully is, are those definitions in the bylaw. And I don't think there's any gray area in the bylaw itself with respect to what constitutes a street in this, with respect to this issue.
Okay. You know, one of my concerns is there are an awful lot of those fire roads at Lake Shirley and other places as well. Some of them, the case before us, when I went to look at that property, it's fire road. It goes in, it's, I don't think it's 10 feet wide. It's probably 15 homes. They go out on a peninsula. And I think under your definition, you're telling me it's a street.
So-
Because odds are, a lot of this stuff was all done at the lot.
Prior to 1947 or so. So if I, if I understand you correctly, you're concerned that that might create setback violations with some of those properties or create some sort of, you know, influx of activity with respects to, you know, complaints of the building commissioner, complaints of the board. I would just suggest that if those rights-of-way have been in existence since 1947, the chances are, or around that time, the chances are so have the residences on those properties. And when you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure such as a residence, you are permitted to make modifications to that structure insofar as, you know, you can't, you can't split your lot and develop it into four residences, but you can make reasonable modifications to an existing non-conforming structure and it won't offend the bylaws. And that's, that's not in the bylaws themselves. That's in case law pertaining to Massachusetts General Act 48, Section 17. So, you know, I don't think there's a real concern that this leads to, you know, a slew of enforcement actions before the board because of the fact that there are those two sunset provisions in Section 17 that protect anything that was done six years ago with a permit and 10 years ago, period.
And anyone else have any questions?
So I just, I wanted to go back a little bit to Mr. Chair for what Hollis said. So look at it and saying that the whole idea here is that if the right-of-way is considered a street, anything within 20 feet of it has to be reduced to 36 inches.
Just the fence?
Oh, I understand that. The fence, any, any part of the fence within 20 feet has to be reduced to 36 inches.
So-
So that does not, you know, but that, understanding that that does not affect any of the fence that's in front of the house.
So, so there's a, there's a couple of factors at play.
But that's what you're asking right now. I'm just trying to clarify what you're asking. You're asking us to saying that the street is, is, the right-of-way is a street and that that means it's gonna be, anything within 20 feet of the street would need to be reduced to 36 inches.
So the right-of-way is a street. Any fence within 20 feet of the, of the street that also obstructs vision has to be reduced to 36 inches now.
So that's still the same section. So that's, that would be even less section then, than you're gonna, than I'm asking. I'm telling you.
Well, I would say a fence is considered to be a singular hole. You wouldn't just, you wouldn't just cut off the section 20 feet.
Well, as we mentioned, you can, a fence can, a fence can taper down. It's done all over the place.
Sure, but if you, if the end result is a fence where, you know, you have a 20-foot portion that's this high and then two, two 20-foot portions, I think it's-
So one of the, one of the discussions from the Lux, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was just addressing. One of the discussions with the Lux was that the reason for the fence was to, to kind of redefine that land as part of the property on Sunset Lane, okay? And that's where, and I understand the reason for the fence and that fact of the matter is that whether that's a three-foot or a six-foot or a four-foot or a five, whatever size of fence can be argued, but that's not really the argument. The idea would be, is that if that's, if that's considered a right-of-way, you're looking at anything within 20 feet would have to be reduced. That if that, if we consider that a street, anything within 20 feet of it has to be reduced to 36, nothing else.
I would, I would disagree. I would say any fence, when it says any fence, it doesn't say any portion of the fence. The bylaw doesn't say any portion of the fence within 20 feet. It says any fence within 20 feet. And I look at it as a fence as a contiguous whole.
So if he put up a second post right at the 20-foot marker and so that it goes from three feet up to six feet and keeps going, then you're gonna say it's not a continuous fence?
I would say that violates the spirit of the bylaw and that's a, I don't, you know, the law doesn't look favorably on clever solutions to things, honestly. Solutions that are obviously intended to get around regulations.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I guess it's then it's the definition of what the fence is.
Right. I would say a, the fence as a contiguous whole needs to be reduced. And if something like that was done, I would argue that that violates the spirit of the bylaw. I think, I don't think I had anything else.
Okay.
Oh, one, one additional thing. I wanted to make sure that, you know, when you were saying anything within, within 20 feet of, of the street, I just wanted to make sure you didn't think that applied all of a sudden every fence within 20 feet? Because obviously you have to have a complainant coming in and saying-
No, I agree. I agree with you. That I, that I agree with 100%.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that-
I have one last.
Go ahead.
So when, when Mr. Luck spoke briefly about the view of the home and he took a picture that he said was level with the fence, this is actually a picture of him taking that picture and he's well above the level of the fence. You can see he's on a ladder, about three feet above the ladder. Mr. Chair, that's the one that showed that you and I, our windows were above the fence.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Normally I would ask for public dis- if there's anybody, I had cut it off last time, but I was gonna allow it again. If you want us, anything to reba-, go ahead. Yeah.
Because the situation, I certainly was, but I believe that picture should show that the camera, I didn't mean to hear where I was, that the camera was sitting on the rung of the ladder that is that blur. That's why it's a blur, because the lens was half, the rung was half covering the lens in that picture. So that is a true picture, as I said, of the line. Just, just, one, you know, I guess I'll, it has nothing to do with this hearing, but there are no permits for that porch in planning. Beyond that, there should have been a waiver because to build something that close to one foot of the line would have needed a waiver and would have had to come to this board to get a waiver to build that porch. So there are no permits, no matter what the claims, the claims are. There is no permit. We've searched the files.
Okay.
The issue is not so important of fences in town. It's not, it's not the most important issue to this board in their ruling. If you rule that fire roads, rights-of-ways are streets, it's not the fence issue that's the biggest issue. It's the setback issue. That is what's gonna kill everybody going forward. You have just now made a decision that every garage coming before you, anything else, any modification that's coming before you has to meet the setback requirements. It's true, you know, I'm in no position to argue with a Boston lawyer, but I only know the fa-, I only know facts. And the fact is that if someone comes before a board or a commission or conservation or anyone with a modification, it's certainly allowable for grandfather case as long as it doesn't increase the non-compliance. If it increases the non-compliance, that's a whole different story. Now it's gotta meet the regulations and meet those setbacks. And somebody wants to put a driveway, a garage, so it's going forward, the setback issue. And that, that's the problem with this ruling that you're dealing with. It's not going backwards. It's not complaints. It's going forward with people trying to use their property that now have to meet all of the setback requirements for streets, for these rights-of-ways and that people live on and is never gonna be a town street. So I could go on, but please understand that. But resolving the issue between us and our neighbors is not this board's job. And I appreciate that you're trying to think of how to, okay, how do we come, how do we find something here? This issue is gonna get resolved in Superior Court. And that, no matter what this board decides tonight, this issue is gonna get carried through Superior Court and either there'll be some modifications to the fence or there won't. And that's gonna happen independent of this decision tonight. So I would beg that this board consider the implications to the rest of town and to the rest of the future development if they now decree that rights-of-ways and fire roads are streets and all the rest of the zoning codes now have to apply going forward. I think that is gonna be a huge impact to the town. My fence will be resolved somewhere else, so, so please find in favor of the ruling.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I am gonna, gonna cut it off. Like I say, there were some people here, but I, we wore them out and they're gone, so there is no more public. So I'm gonna bring it to the board. Like that?
It's through one extremely percolant, less than a minute.
Less than a minute.
If the entire length of the fence were, were reduced to 36 inches, we would not continue the court case. So the suggestion that this, this decision is irrelevant and this is gonna be decided in Superior Court is incorrect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are cutting it off. We are bringing it to the board. So I would ask for discussion from the board. Anything?
The only thing I would say, you know, obviously each, you know, hearing has its own merits. But in this particular case, you know, I might agree with the applicant about the street because they were assessed a betterment. You know, if you look, if you look in this, I mean, they were all assessed a betterment for a public street. And so in this particular case-
But, but then you're assessed a betterment because the only way to get to your right-of-way or your street or your fire road or whatever is to use Sunset Lane to get there. So you have to use-
Well, they don't come off Sunset. They actually come off of Flat Hill.
No.
No.
No, Sunset, I think.
They come off Fire Road 27. We don't come off Sunset.
I mean, it, they were clearly assessed a $13,000 betterment fee, you know? Even though they don't abut it, they were assessed it.
Because they use it.
Because they use it to get to their property. So.
Okay.
Listen, I, I try to be common sense and try to make an agreement.
Well, no, I want, you know, everybody tries to use common sense. I just want everybody also to focus that, you know, this is a case of a person agreed by the building inspector's decision about his decision about the fence. So that's what's before us and we're not, I know we heard an awful lot of history. We heard a lot of things that are, you know, interesting but not relevant to the zoning. So I just wanna make sure we keep in mind what we're looking at. My opinion, a six-foot fence is allowed by the bylaw. You don't have to go to get a permit to put up a six-foot stockade fence on your property. You don't have to put the good side anyway, you know, by our bylaw, which is the zoning that we have to go by. The argument about the street, that's, you know, we've heard some pretty good arguments about that. It's up to us to decide. And then I think if that was the case, and please disagree, if you would like, whatever, but I, I think when they're talking about the 20 feet, that's what they're talking about, 20 feet. So I think that if there was a reduction, it would be on the 20 feet, not the entire fence, as is suggested. That's my opinion. But again, it depends on whether you find it to be a street or right-of-way, whatever it is, fire road, whatever.
So Mr. Chair, I, I agree that the fact that they got, have been in the past and there's history of assessed a betterment for a street kind of leads me towards that they do, they should have some of the same rights as a street. But it does lead me also to what you mentioned, what you just mentioned, that we're only talking about 20 feet. I don't look at it as the continuous fence. I look at anything within 20 feet of the road would have to be, have to be reduced. And that's, that's what I'm looking, so I wouldn't, that, that's, this, I don't think, feel this case does precedence to all other cases. It's the betterment of being, having to have paid for a street that kind of offsets that from others.
Okay, now, I think one of the other things we've gotta look at is, you know, is the landscaping going to make it to six-foot in height? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Right, because right now it's seven something.
But if you did, you went there, Hans, correct? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But the Jewels land is at that height. So, you know, if you're gonna erect a fence, I understand if you're landscaping your entire yard and then you put a fence up, it's six feet. It's known in the industry as a six-foot fence.
Right.
Right? I don't think anybody, you know, if you were putting up a fence and there happened to be a dip, a dip or a gully or whatever, you're gonna fill it in. You're not gonna build the fence to follow the contour.
I mean, I just, so what about the safety issue? Like when, when I went there, you know, it's definitely in-your-face fence. There's no doubt about it. It's in your face, that fence, you know? If I was the applicant in pulling in my driveway and I was pulling out, I mean, I don't know if I could see around, I don't know if I could see around that. I mean, that's, that's-
That's something, yeah, you have to consider.
Well, that's why I thought if it was tapered on both ends.
Right, well, that's right, yeah, right, exactly. It alleviates the safety issue on both sides.
Right.
But that's not what they're looking for. They want the entire fence at 36 inches.
But then he has the right, if he didn't wanna have the fence, he could plant trees or albatites that can grow up to six feet within three years.
He has the right to put up a fence. It's his property.
That's right. But the alternative is that.
Did the building inspector err?
Right, exactly. The building inspector, in fact, as he mentioned, I believe Gary allocated it. I don't know if it went as far back as Mike Savage. I have no idea. So again, we're talking about, did the building inspector-
Err.
Err on his decision that there was no violation? And that's, you know, and is it on a street? Is it in violation?
The way I read it, and it's a matter of a couple of words, where it says, no fence which obstructs vision. If you took those three words, it would just say, no fence shall exceed 36 inches within 20 feet. But where it says obstructs vision, I mean, to me, that's kind of, I work in Boston a lot. My vision's always, I'm always looking through- lot, my vision's always, I'm always looking through another car's windows, so my definition is probably not the greatest one to go off, but when I read that, I think of that the same way as if you're putting a pillar up at a gas station and I'm pulling out of the gas station, am I looking at the truck coming down, or am I looking at the side of the sign at the gas station? So that, when it says that view, I need to be able to see, pass the sign and see traffic coming, is kind of how I interpret that which obstructs vision.
So what are you suggesting?
I mean, the way I read that is if it's within twenty feet and it's, you know, the street on the other side of the road and it's this person's backyard and it's a straight road and it doesn't obstruct anything, then why does it need to be thirty-six inches?
That's, I think, to your point, where it would just need to taper, if it tapered at the ends, causing a certain distance, a safe distance, but that's still, that is, how far do we say? I mean, we don't, we're not going out there measuring everything and we'd have to, how far can we say that? That becomes that safe distance on each side. It's, to me, it's really the main road that becomes the difficult part, that part that we have the fifteen-inch gap right at that main road that you have to work, that would be the only area that I would look at as being obstructed. I guess, you know, if the decision was to come in the, I mean, right now it looks like they come down the, come down the right-of-way and make a right at the first, first part of the driveway and come to the house that way, if they ever decide to go the other way, then they would be trying to pull out from there and you would have your driver, you wouldn't be able to see anybody coming from the houses as easy. You know, that's, that section would have to go to thirty-six inches. But how far, how far do I make that? You know, do I say ten feet? Do I say five feet, seven feet?
Say for one...
One section.
One section on each end. If you're pulling out of your driveway, it's your responsibility to slow down and make sure no one's coming.
That is, I agree, I agree. But, right, however, you, you, you know, if you have to keep easing out, coming, having lived in Everett and Revere for a while, when you had to ease out just enough to stop traffic because you couldn't see anything anyhow, I don't think, that's the intent of the law.
Right.
So I kind of look at it as, I mean, I, in honest, I don't disagree, I look at the fact that there is the betterment as making this more of a special case for the street. However, it's, it would only be the section that might obstruct view that we would have to worry about, to become thirty-six inches.
So, if I'm hearing this right, and I'm just, again, discussing, what I'm hearing is the height of the fence and the landscaping...
Yeah.
Is...
Appropriate.
Within zoning and he would, and the zoning...
Right.
Was correct by the zoning commissioner.
I mean, granted, it would be nice if it could be reduced to six inches, that's all, that's nicety, that's more of being, you know, looking at it as towards a good neighbor, but yes, I agree, and if there is a problem with drainage, they definitely do need to make the, make the land more conducive for the drain, that's there. Slope the land, build up the land and slope it in a certain way that would help with the drainage.
Okay. So, that leaves us with the question of, I think I'm hearing that, that you do disagree with the twenty-foot. He found it not to be a street, I think, you know, and I'm not saying for everything because I don't know who thinks what.
Right.
But...
Yeah, I mean, the building...
It almost seems, you know...
The building inspector said in his...
You have to make a motion at some point here.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, I'm saying that it's that a right-of-way is not necessarily a street, however, being assessed a betterment definitely was a special case.
So yes, and a right-of-way is not necessarily, okay?
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out...
No, I understand, and I agree with...
Because I want everybody to be clear...
Yeah.
On who's, you know, in the discussion.
I mean, really, I think it comes down to, you know, the building inspector, I'm looking at his decision, he's basically saying, therefore, the fence is not required to be reduced in height. I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
Correct.
His interpretation is that it doesn't have to be reduced in height.
He's saying it's not a street here.
Correct.
That is correct, yeah. He's saying it's not a street, so it doesn't have to be reduced.
Correct.
What we've heard tonight is a lot of, you know...
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
So I would, when I read this, same one I was speaking of, I would say, okay, fine, call it a street. As long as it doesn't obstruct vision, it can be six feet.
That's, that's true as well.
Right, and it says here, "Specific concerns conveyed where height allowed and obstruction of vision." That's what, that's what I think the applicant is bringing up. It's, the obstruction of vision is an issue and therefore the height is an issue.
Right. And, and I know you've got to think, but the fact that, you know, one of the, one of the concerns for myself was the police, the police chief and the idea of safety, or the fire department and the idea of safety, and both of them came back saying they didn't consider it a safety issue. So, well, it's, I can't get, I can't get the argument of safety other than a vehicle and obstructed view. So, you know, part of me wants to say a right-of-way should be, should be seen as a street. Because even if I look at that, anybody in those, in that area, if they want to do anything...
The fence for the same argument, my ex.
Right, and so to me, anybody in that area who wants to do anything to their lot, anything to their lot, is going to be in front of us anyhow, because nothing's conforming in that, in that area at all. So part of that is, I do, in a way, I do believe that in the definition of a street, it says a public or private way, and a right-of-way is, is, I mean, I don't know how much of a better definition of a private way do you want, in some sense. So I think the biggest thing is, is really, would be, anything that would be deemed, anything that was seen as obstructed view is the only area.
Okay. Any other discussion? And can I have a motion?
I could do the, I'll do the bold motion of saying that, that a, a right-of-way is indeed a private way, which is part of, which would, in the definition of the bylaws, would be considered a street. So I would rule in favor of the, in favor, in favor of the plaintiff. Well, against, actually, against the building inspector, in saying that to me, a right-of-way is...
Well, what you've got to do is, you know, it's a, it's a, you had a case, but, you know, a party that's agreed by the building inspector. So you're either going to uphold, you know, you're either going to say whatever he was, he didn't err...
Right.
Or he did.
So, okay, so my...
Without...
Right, so my, my, my motion is that the building inspector did err in the fact that a right-of-way is, is, is a street. Did I say that right?
Well, I think you're saying partial, you know, I was playing, you're not...
I think you're saying, I think you're saying that he erred by saying that the right-of-way was not a street.
Not a street, was not a street.
Which, which we're talking about the whole fence, the height, the, you know what I mean?
No, because that's, even if the, in the, in the rules for the fence, it's only with, with anything that's within twenty feet of the road that obstructs, obstructs view of the road. So we're not talking about the whole fence at all. I'm not, because the most of that fence is not within twenty feet of the...
Well, go ahead and make your motion.
Yeah, but hold on, so I think he either has, we either have to uphold what the building inspector's decision or, or not.
Correct.
Yeah, it can't, it's not ambiguous, it's either he did err or he didn't.
Either he did or he didn't.
Yeah, so that's what it has to do.
Not how he wrote, it matter, or whether you disagree with part or not part.
Oh, I agree, I agree. So that's, my motion is that I'm, so what I'm saying is, is I believe that the building inspector erred, err, erred, in the fact...
So you think he's...
In his decision.
In his, in his decision, period.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second not.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yeah, it's discussion part.
Does, even if going against the building inspectors, that, does that solve anything? Or is that not?
Well, I think what he's saying is, I think what you're saying is...
Because I can, I'll call it a street, but I still think the, I still don't know that the fence is necessarily wrong for me, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Well, what you're saying is you don't agree. But that's up to you to decide.
Well, isn't it our decision just to decide whether it's a, it's a street or not?
No.
No, we're not deciding if it's a street or not.
We're not deciding whether...
The building inspector said, okay, that he, they have a right to put up this six-foot fence by right.
Okay.
Okay? And that it doesn't obstruct the view, he doesn't believe it's a street, so that it can be a six-foot, doesn't have to have the thirty-six inch for twenty feet.
Correct.
Okay? So that's, that's what's before us, this is what he decided, okay?
And what you were, and when your motion on the table, the motion on the table now, it's been seconded, is, and we'll vote on at some point, is, did he err in his decision? You said yes, I said yes.
Right.
And now we're discussing...
So you're saying that he was incorrect.
So you said yes, he said yes, but that's just to get a motion on the floor.
Correct.
Floor, but you can vote against the, you can vote against the motion.
Absolutely, of course, you vote what you think.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just to be crisp, Dave made a motion that the building inspector erred in his decision.
Period. That's period. That's all I can do is, I, oh, I'm gonna, it's just an error or no error.
Did he or did he not? But didn't find anything, because you don't need to.
No, correct.
Okay.
And, and his decision was that it was...
His decision was that it is not in violation of zoning.
Well, that it's...
That the six-foot stockade fence is allowed...
Yes.
By zoning.
Yep, as it's...
And that the section that is on a sixteen-foot right-of-way and fourteen, does not obstruct view because it's not a street, it's a right-of-way, and that, that twenty-foot setback does not apply. That was his decision.
That's correct.
Is he still here?
He left now.
Okay, that's, that was his decision, okay? We have a party that was agreed by that decision that said, I think he's wrong. I think that, so what, they filed to say, you know, we're agreed by his decision. So where do we go? You go to the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
And that's what we sat here and heard from both parties and both things, and now you have to decide not, whether it's a street or anything else, you have to decide, did the building inspector err in his decision, error in his decision of that there is, that the fence at the, as he sees it meets the zoning.
Can I throw my concern out one more time? Sorry, I'm going to say the same old thing, but I, just reading it, I do sort of agree with the building inspector. But when you go through the bylaws, I feel like you can make the argument that, sure, it's a street. Where I hang up is, even if you call it a street, does it, like, is it still... I think the little thing that is, is, can you see, you know, can you get out of there safely or not? Like, if you take both, if you take one section of both ends, now, you know, my F-150 can completely be exposed looking down the road.
Right.
But does that just solve everything? And, and the thirty-six-inch thing doesn't even apply anymore? Is, is my question.
It's still within twenty feet, but...
Right.
But I can see free and clear, and everyone can see me free and clear.
All right, but we can address that. If we vote this down and say that he was correct, then we can put conditions in to alleviate the situation in a different motion.
Yeah.
We'll come to that.
Right, all right. Is he, is Jim correct in that? If that, if this is voted down...
We really, we really...
Because is it our place to put conditions?
Huh?
Is it our place to put the conditions right now?
Right now, it's our place to rule on whether he...
Erred or not.
Correct.
So your motion is...
I think, I think where everybody's confused is, I think that, that, and I don't know because I'm going to tell you what I was thinking, you know, okay?
Just personally, yes.
I think the six-feet stockade fence...
Yeah.
Under our zoning...
Is okay.
On his property is allowed.
Yes.
Right, agree.
And I think what you guys are struggling with is the fact that the building inspector didn't set, think that the twenty-foot part...
Mattered, yeah.
Right? But that's what it is, that's what his decision was. I can't change his decision, he, you know...
I'm going back to my original A, B, and C. I would have liked to see it reduced, tapered...
Yes.
Right, right.
And that's not, that's not what it is.
That's not...
That's not, and that's the problem.
That is not here.
The problem is, I feel like I'm caught here. I'm caught here because I, I feel most of the ninety, ninety-eight percent of the decision was correct.
Right.
However, at the end, it has to be a hundred percent, I have to feel like it's a hundred percent of the decision.
Well, if it's ninety-eight percent, it's not going to be a hundred percent, no matter which way you think.
Yeah.
So if I say that, if I want to say that I think the building commissioner was correct in his decision, then I vote...
You vote against it.
Against this.
That's correct.
So I will vote against.
All right. Yeah, it's, there's a motion, there's a second. He's voting against it?
I say aye.
I say aye. Nay.
Nay, nay. Okay.
No, no, yes, yes, no.
Correct.
Correct. So...
Can I, we make a motion to offer a solution?
I don't believe so.
Well, when they get to do that, they might consider it themselves.
I would hope so. This is, I think, as somebody pointed out, this is a dispute between neighbors, but we have to look at it strictly through the zoning, through the building inspector and all that was presented.
And so the way that, that, that vote came was...
The way that vote came, he needed to carry that.
Four.
You needed four.
Right.
You only got two, so it's, the decision is that we don't believe the building inspector was an error.
That's right, so his, his decision was upheld.
Decision is upheld.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks.
It was hot.
We, we hope, we hope, we hope and pray you guys come up with a solution.
In the, in the, in the case before with the dogs was just as hot.
Do you have anything to read about that?
Can I, can I make a motion, we turn?
Second.
I think this is the latest we've ever been here.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever been here in ten minutes.
No, you see, even the ones where we had the...
Is it almost midnight?
Yeah, yeah, no, we've never been here this late.
Do I have to tell anyone I got to get up at five in the morning?
So I, I got home at 3:00 AM and I was up at seven again this morning. Another one of these wonderful trips.
I'll make sure I tell my eighteen-month-old to sleep in tomorrow.